July 23rd. This is a meeting that's being held via remote participation. And the meeting will be recorded. We're going to, at the end, go into executive session to discuss legal strategy, purchase or lease of real estate and negotiation with our represented personnel, and will not reconvene. I'd like to make a request for a timekeeper for tonight to keep us on schedule.
Yeah, there she is.
And Sarah, I'd like you to start the recording if you have not done so already.
Roger, do you want me to, when we are approaching a time limit, to unmute and say something? Or do you want me to just type it in the chat? There was confusion about that last time.
Um.
Or what do people think?
I would say put it in the chat as an unintrusive way, but if it's obvious that the speaker hasn't seen it, maybe cut them off.
Okay, I think when people are presenting things, then it's hard for them to see it, so.
What about raising your hand, like five minutes in with just a five?
When they're presenting, it's hard to see everybody.
When you're presenting on a full screen, you actually can't see the messages and you can't see your faces depending upon which way you do it. So Jess, you may have to give me a...
Yeah. Maybe I need a gong or something.
Little air horn?
All right, I'll try the chin, but then I might ping. I might get a little more aggressive if I know someone's on full screen.
If your discretion for a longer conversation, maybe five minutes before the end, to give a five-minute warning?
Yep, okay, will do.
Excellent. All right. So we are ready to begin. So we've recorded our attendance and guests. And next up, I would like, it's a great honor to pass the baton to Jill to nominate Samini to join as a board member.
Yes, so governance at the last meeting nominated Samini to be a full board member. So we'd like to just give her the opportunity to say a few words to everybody. And then I will ask for a vote to nominate Samini to the full Board of Trustees.
Thanks, Jill, and thanks, Roger. I have been an AMSA parent over, for both my daughters who are AMSA alumni. And I'm excited to be able to serve on the board. If the board passes that motion, very excited to be able to work with all of you. I've been very grateful to be able to be a part of the board's conversations since January of this year. It's really given me a whole picture of what the board does and how seriously all of you take your responsibility towards the school. That's the kind of community that I'm hoping to join. And I've always been impressed with the AMSA community. Overall, I have valued the teachers and the students most of all as I've seen my children progress through the schools. And I hope to contribute to keep the culture of the school, its core values and its mission going, and serve my own responsibilities as a board member and give my best as I work with all of you over the next few years. So thank you for the opportunity. And I really appreciate the camaraderie that comes with this group. And thanks for all the collaborations we've had thus far. I look forward to many more.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Samini?
I don't, and I don't, I don't get to vote, but I just wanted to thank her very much. I have worked off and on with Samini and her girls for five years. This is an absolute pleasure, and so welcome.
I was gonna ask if she knew what she was getting into, but I think by now she already does.
I do. I've seen all of you in all the many forms, and I still want to be a part of it. No, I actually want to be a part of it because of that. Thank you.
That's great. So. Did you want to make a motion, Roger?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Samini to a, to join the Board of Trustees as a trustee.
Cindy, I second.
Okay, so Roger slash Cindy, I'll do the roll call. So, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Oh, good, I'm still after Nick every time. Yes!
Yes, the order has remained the same. Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes, the motion passes unanimously. Welcome to Samini.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
All right. So next, we did this one out of order so that Samini could participate as a full trustee in the board meeting. So next I'd call for public comment. And notice we have a few additional attendees on this board meeting. Welcome, everybody. And if you wish to public comment at this time, please unmute and express your interest.
This is Padmaja. I would like to make a public comment.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna take them in order first. Padmaja? Anybody else wishing to speak in public, in the public speak portion? Hearing no one else wishing to speak in public session, I'd like to invite Padmaja to address the board.
Hi, my name is Padmaja Bandaro. I am the computer science teacher at AMSA. I just have to, I was just thinking about the planning for the remote teaching and everything for the coming fall. And I know the board is going to make, Ellen is going to make discussion about this, and then the board is going to probably make a decision on that one. So before that, I just wanted to present my two cents in this, if I may, is that planning for two or three different things has been very, very stressful for majority of the teachers. Saying that, okay, we are going to be hybrid 33%, then going back to 50%. And then if that doesn't work, we go back to 33% or completely remote. So every single day, planning for lessons or how do we deliver the lessons and what are the consequential things that are going to happen because of that has been very, very stressful for majority of us. We are, like, you know, when we talk to each other, like, we keep thinking about it. And there is nothing we can, we know for sure that this is what is going to happen. So while thinking about it today, and we were, like, you know, we were glad that some kind of direction came from Ellen yesterday in the meeting and then saying that we are definitely going to start remote and then we will revisit this for phase two and phase three and all of those things. We definitely welcome that. To, the only thing that I wanted to add to that is even then going till October 1st and then decided that, I mean, it is still four weeks is too short a time to plan anything for the continuation of things. Still, there is some kind of uncertainty in that. It would be helpful for teachers and students and the parents to create a routine. If we pick a hard date, like, you know, term one, let's just say, can be remote. And then we will revisit that at that time. It is just a suggestion, it is a request, it's suggestion and request. We can say, we can have more data. How did the remote classes go? How engaged were the students? How did the grading work? How did the classes work? And by that time, we probably will have much more data about the COVID numbers and how things are affecting and that. So we would like, I would like to request that, to consider that while you make decisions. Thank you.
Padmaja, what is the actual request? Looking for more time than four weeks?
Coming up with a hard date, saying that up until end of term one, we will be remote. Something like that. For clear planning, for teachers and parents and students.
Thank you, thank you. Other, any other questions for Padmaja?
Yeah, just, can I hear the teacher's perspective, which I know we always get through Jess, that Padmaja, just because you spoke up. I have the impression that the teachers, just because this is the way AMSA was built and how they're used to working, that they would prefer a plan, or they would prefer, if at all possible and safe for everybody, for instruction to be done in person. And when I say prefer, what I mean is that they would, that's what they're used and that's what they want. But is that still the case, you know, everything else being equal?
Okay, so to clarify on that one, there is absolutely no substitute to the in-class teaching. Definitely not. Everybody agrees that, everybody knows that, that's a known fact. We're not operating on that right now. Everybody at AMSA, with regards to curriculum, with regards to the engagement of the students, we all agree that there is no possible substitute for that. But the issue is, we don't know whether, the uncertainty is the one that is stressing us all out. Like, you know, is the ventilation system working? Like, you know, will, are we meeting the requirements? Is three feet distance okay, or six feet is being suggested? Like, you know, how good is all of this going to play into how we run the classes? Because if we don't have any cases and we go move into 33, 33, 33, and then suddenly the numbers raise and we say, oh, oops, we're going back, the chaos and confusion that can cause for teachers and students is not going to do any of us any favors. If we say, this is term one, we are going to do remote, and we reevaluate the situation, we will have a lot more information for all practical purposes for everybody around the things. Like, you know, hedgeback systems can be updated or checked out, or we can get more information, get more communication from CDC or Department of Education, whatever, whatever organizations that we are trying to work with. It puts a lot of people at ease so that because there is a clear structure and planning, which is what the parents would like to have, we can create structured delivery of lessons and expectations and policies around that for term one. And we will, we will have good feedback from the students to what worked and what did not. All of these things can fall in place, and it is just because of that. No way, nobody is going to say that it is a substitution for in-class. We want to do the best we can, given the situation is the thing. If we can focus all our energies and resources towards figuring out what PD we would need, we can help out each other and use this summer time to be able to help each other out, whoever needs, whatever that might be, guiding them, working them to, like, you know, work with them with Google Classroom or something like that. It's just, it's just like, you know, it helps teachers in many levels. That's the thing.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, there is a lot less disruptions in terms of teaching and learning that can go on because there is a consistent system for the whole term one.
Okay, thank you, Padmaja. Any other, last call for any other public comment? All right, thank you. And Padmaja, thank you for participating in the public comments. And next, we're going to continue our usual strategy to proceed with all the votes that the board takes. We're gonna start next with the approval of the board minutes from the June meeting.
I did find a couple things in the minutes, if I may. Shouldn't we have, so I probably won't pronounce her name wrong. So Leo, that lovely young lady who came in to speak to us, she wasn't listed as one of the guests present. Oops, you're muted there.
You're on mute.
Yeah, she was. I will have her as listed. I thought she was, but I can do that.
Yeah, I don't see her there. And then just little things, on page two of the minutes, under public comment, in the second paragraph, it says, "So Leo said he plans to continue on going." You do have her as she later on, but it said he there.
Okay.
And then the next paragraph, Jessica Bowen, at the end of it, it says, "Who are truing to make a difference?" That's probably trying. And I think, I think there was one more, yes, on page seven. Section C, Staff Survey Task Force Readout, 123. Third paragraph, Raul mentioned things that are lingering themes, I believe, instead of lingering.
That was fixed. That was corrected.
Okay, good. Okay, that was it. That's all I found. Move to approve the minutes.
Wait, and if you corrected that, I just want to call out the other thing that I asked for correction. The, I abstained from voting for myself.
That was corrected.
Yep, okay.
And then clarification on the culture and diversity policy. That that was a board suggestion.
Yeah, and we talked about it in governance, but the minutes should reflect.
Right.
Okay, any other clarifications or edits?
Nope.
I'll take a motion to approve with edits.
Motion to approve with edits.
Second, please. So Cindy and Raul? All right, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes, the motion passes unanimously. Minutes are approved. Next is approval of the budget for the 2021 school year. I'd like to pass the baton to Kristin at this point.
Thanks, Roger. I know folks had a hard time looking at that annual report. A fairly detailed budget is included in the annual report. We, as we were just discussing, there's still quite a few items up in the air for the next school year, and the budget is certainly impacted by all of those items. So I'm just gonna very quickly run through the highlights of the budget and then describe a little bit of the next process that we have. So for the 2021 year, tuition is estimated at $14.3 million, and that is 92% of the incoming funds for the school. Pass-through funds, which are all optioned by expanded, total $1 million. That's 7%, so that's grant for student activity fees. All money that comes in, it gets spent directly on costs of the budget. And then a small amount of other income that the school receives that comes from rental income in the White Building and investment income and interest expenses, very small, which is another nearly $300,000, and is about 2% of the fund. So the total amount of cash in from income for the next year's budget is currently proposed at $15.6 million. The expenses of the next year are totaling $15.5 million. So we basically have a break-even budget that we are authorizing at this point in time and include in the annual report. Of those expenses, 68% of those are for salaries and benefits for the entire school. Facilities and other costs are another 14% of the cost budget. Pass-through costs that relate to the income is another 5%. And then we have a handful of other small costs, including depreciation, administrative costs, instructional costs and supplies and professional development and other athletics costs and the physical education. Rental space over at Forekicks is another 3%. So those tiny costs are 3% each, basically, for a total of $15.5 million. So it's a break-even budget. It is subject to, we are tentatively, we are asking for tentative approval from the board tonight for this budget to include in the annual report, subject to changes that we will revisit in the next month or two related to the collective bargaining arrangement, which is still being worked on, as well as, as we just already have been discussing, and we're gonna hear a lot more about the operating strategies that the school will be operating under and all the approved plans by the State Department of Education. So still a lot of items up in the air. All of those will have an impact on the budget. And so therefore, we're recommending this as a tentative budget, okay? Subject to these other changes. We are also approving because there's another very high probability this coming year, given all the news of tax shortfalls, high unemployment, many, many businesses being closed, that there is a probability that the total tuition income may be reduced next year. So as a result of that, we are, we are also authorizing at this point, and it may change again, for the school to go into a deficit up to an amount equal to their net cash flow, which is about $300,000. So if income were to go down by $300,000, we've already told them, you can cut into your cash flow, you will incur a loss for the year, but we know that that's going to be necessary in order to continue to maintain the education for the school next year. And again, we don't have a complete set of costs because everything is still in flux. But we wanted to give a little bit of cushion to Ellen and team to be able to have some extra money to operate. So it's, this year, we're authorizing a deficit if that were to occur. And I think that's it. So that said, we're basically recommending that the board approve a break-even budget for the school for next year. Any questions?
Hey, Kristin, this is Ben. Real quick, on, when you figured out the budget, do you figure in any of the applied-for grants or anything like that? Or is there any outstanding still of those items that may fall into place?
So the only grants that are included are the grants that have already been applied for and won or are likely to be won. But none of the, really, for the most part, none of the grants or funds associated with the state FEMA or COVID planning grants that are available have not really been baked into this budget yet. Those are going to be layered in at the next phase once we have a better understanding of what they are, where they're coming from, and a better understanding of what the total costs would be associated with those as well. And there's a lot of money around that, right? So, you know, there's an initial amount of 225 per student that's available, that's going to cover a significant amount of PPP and other costs. There's also FEMA reimbursing 75% of several types of costs that the school is going to incur. So there's quite a bit of other funding that will be available. But there's likely going to be timing lags associated with spending the money to incur those costs, to get the supplies, to buy computers and everything else. And that will all potentially, we spend the money and then we get it back at a later point in time, which is another reason why we want to give the school an opportunity to spend in advance of getting all of that money. And most of it will be passed through. So every dollar that they pull in, they will spend. And there is likely going to be more spend than the dollars that they are able to receive. And it's all up in the air, you know, we were, you know, if it's all online, there's a significant amount of cost associated with ensuring that the teachers and the faculty are able to provide the best education possible. They've already had a trial run this past spring, and so they know what they've needed. And they're gonna be able to do a lot more, and they're gonna need money to do that. And so that's what we're gonna be working towards figuring out how to achieve in the next round of the budget.
All right, thanks a lot.
Any other questions? Ellen, I don't know if you wanted to say something. It looked like we might have unmuted.
Yeah, really, just that the expenses were going to be offset. And also, those grants, the application, if, for example, the $225 per student grant that Kristin mentioned, the itemization and the application actually isn't even due till August 31st. And so we're accumulating, you know, a list right now, and then we will apply for that. So the money will come in later.
All right.
All right, if I may, Samini, I just have a question, very new to this, obviously. Are there any differences from last year that would be nice for us to know? I was trying to figure out how the capital expenses, and maybe you're gonna go into this later, the expenses on page 14 of the report fit into what you're talking about with the budget? And more specifically, with instructional supplies and equipment at $321,000, I was just comparing that against the year before where it said $188,000. So I'm just getting, trying to get a better sense of what does that mean when something goes up by that amount? And what special things is the school doing that projected to happen in the coming year?
Are you looking at the annual report, Samini?
I am.
Yeah, let me go to 17 with you here. So in the capital, where we're looking at capital, it's really very bottoms-up development by the teachers and whatnot. This year, for example, we spent significant amounts of money on upgrading the server in school. That was done before the school started. This year, we have significantly less. I think we spent almost $800,000 in capital during this year versus $280,000 or so, that's budgeted for next year. As far as supplies, equally, it is a bottoms-up budget with estimates prepared by the teachers and the administrators and everyone in the school. And by the time the year end comes along, sometimes they spend all of that money and sometimes they don't. For example, in the budget for 2021, there was going to be some pretty significant textbook purchases. That was one of the requests as an example. And, you know, due to some surplus in this year, some of those purchases were pulled into this year. So now they're no longer going to be in next year. So you might see more expenses this year as a result of that expense being higher. And then you might see it then fall to be lower next year because of some timing differences. And for the most part, yeah, for the most part, just the administration has flexibility to spend within the budget, as well as during our finance committee meetings, they will at times ask for different amounts and will often just allow them to approve. I mean, overall, in the end, as long as they stay within the total bottom line predicted within the budget, we're pretty fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
We got that, a little flexibility.
Oh, sorry, I just noticed that Jess posted that we were up on time, so kidding that.
Thanks, Jess, and thanks for letting me know. Because you're right, I didn't see it. So that said, I mean, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve a break-even budget for next year, tentative and subject to changes that we will present later in the fall once we finalize some of those other operating items that are still open and pending. We're looking at targeting August and then potentially September if necessary. Sorry, Jill.
Just one technical comment, because the annual report says that this was approved on June 23rd, 2020. Assume we approve it today, it should say July 23rd, 2020, correct?
Sarah's on mute, I think she said.
I got it, thank you.
Originally, we were trying to shoot for last month, Jill, so, yeah. We wanted to give it as much time as possible in case everything got resolved before today. But no such luck.
Got it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the budget.
Second?
Second was from?
Maura.
Maura, all right. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. It was a, we spent much labor, much labor was spent to get to this point. And we have much more to go, clearly.
Yes, we do. Thanks, Roger. Yes, we do. Thanks Roger. Thanks, everybody.
Special, special thanks to Leanna and Ellen for getting us here. Alright, that was the budget. Next is the annual report. I'd like to pass the baton to Sarah, I believe. And you're probably on mute.
To me, would, oh, I thought Ellen was going to do that. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to do that. The annual report? No, that's fine, the annual report. Well, this is just a report on the progress of the school based on our accountability plan, our previous, our current accountability plan. And it's just measuring our progress, success, to faithfulness of charter, the academic delivery and organizational ability, I guess. I don't know. Ellen, did you want to say anything?
No, that, that I think covers it. We, we have to submit one of these every year on August 1st. Sarah's been doing it for years, and she does a bang up job. It's an accumulation of a lot of input from department chairs and from, from us, from the deans on the discipline side. And she pulls all that information together and gives us a nice summary. And it goes onto the website. It goes, as I said, it goes into the Department of Education, so that is the annual report.
I have one minor, sorry, one minor correction, or maybe a question. There's tables towards the end, a page that's marked number 27, that had the schedule of the board meetings, and for the 2020, 2021 school year. And the year of those dates are correct for up till December, but I think January, February, March, April, those are all 2021, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that should be correct.
Thank you.
Another thought too is that this really still is in draft form. This isn't, as we said, due till August 1st. And so, you know, we, we will be tweaking for, for some time. So as you pass this, it would be with, you know, minor edits that might be made along the way.
Okay, to get this to everybody, a week in advance of the week in advance. So, so you were able to see this. Thank you, Roel. Those are, those are the things we need to eagle eyes for.
Right. And you already, and you already picked up on the budget mentioning June.
Yeah.
The other thing, which is a little bit more of a an issue, well, I shouldn't say issue, but discussion. At some point, I don't remember exactly where, it mentions that we will be creating a rubric for measuring progress towards our values, alignment of our values. I think it has to do with the responsibility section, or there was a goal before for that. I don't know if I, I'm not connecting the dots, but if you look at the accountability plan, I didn't see a mention of that rubric. And maybe we need to talk about that.
That, well, that was something, actually. So this, this was accountability plan was the one that was updated by Dr. McCleary all those years ago, and that was a goal that he had, and that was something that as a school, we didn't, the rubric was created by him, and we decided then to, to create the core values and went through that process to create the core values. So I believe on that accountability, on the accountability plan, it's on the very, I think it's the last box on the second page, and Sarah puts a little statement in there saying that we're not measuring that, and we haven't in the last three years.
So I guess it's a question not about the annual plan, but about the accountability. I mean, not about the annual report, but the accountability plan.
So because we made mention of trying to put a metric into our new one, you're probably right. We should probably change the wording in that.
Well, either way, if, if we're saying that we are measuring somehow, we should be able to track that.
That is, this is the last year we're using that measure. This is the end. This is the last time we'll be doing it. Next year, we'll be measuring on our new accountability plan that you'll be voting on tonight.
Right, that's what I mean. So this report says in that section, we're no longer calculating this, which is where you're, you know, and but it also says, the school is in the process of creating a rubric for measuring these values, which will be.
And we were. That's why I'm saying, I think you're right, we should probably reword that, because up until recently, we were still trying to figure out a rubric for that.
So what's the update? That we're not anymore, or that we have it?
No, no, it's just different. It's not going to be part of the accountability plan. We're going forward with all the core values and metrics and things. It's just not going to be part of the accountability plan, right Ellen?
So this, this was old wording from, from our prior ED that was doing, what was it? Respect and responsibility. It was R and R. And we, there was, there was a rubric that was created that, that we, we walked away from when the, there was a change in administration, three and a half years ago.
Is a possible solution, this is Jess, is a possible solution adding like a little footnote there? Like this is a, this is the last year this is in here, and where this has been phased out, and would, would that address your concerns, Roel?
I don't know, because, let, let me share, because maybe we're talking about different things. Because the way I read it, we are acknowledging that. We're acknowledging that we're no longer tracking that objective, but we are creating a rubric for the, the new values that, that were created. I mean.
You're right, that, that should be taken.
We are or we aren't.
We should strike it.
That's what I want to clarify. Are we creating a rubric or not? And, and if we're not, then let's not promise that we are.
Yeah, no, I think that's probably a leftover, and we should strike it out. That was good, good eyes catching that.
Yeah.
And striking out this, this language.
Yes.
Right, so if that's the case, I agree with that, and striking out that language. I mean, obviously, we want to track our, our progress with values, but whether the rubric is the way to do it or not, that's, that's a different discussion, but.
It's just not part of the accountability plan, right?
Okay, so yeah, so let's strike that language, I would say. And I'm, I'm turning my screen side, I hope you see that where it is.
Yes, I can. I know exactly what you're talking about. I think about it every time I go do that, yes.
Alright, that's it, that's all I got.
Sarah, if we saw other little minor typo things, I can just email you with that, right? Because, okay, that works.
And I think that it will be voted on tonight with grammatical, factual errors, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I, I had a, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry Ben. This is Sheila. Can I just ask a question about the chart on page three about student discipline? When, the, the second column, that's students disciplined, the number that's included in that column, is that individual students who receive discipline or incidence of discipline? Because my question is, there's a couple, there's a couple subsections in there that the percentage is a lot higher than the all student percentage, and I was just curious if the differential could be explained by, one student might have had multiple incidents of discipline as opposed to eight students in that, in that subgroup were disciplined. Does that make sense? So it's a factual question.
No, it is, and this is, this is information that's taken from the state, and Anthony Montesian put this together, but this is really information that's taken directly from the state site, I believe.
So we report to the state, and they tabulate that?
Yes.
Yeah, it goes in through, it goes in through Reddicker, through the, they, they keep track of everything in the student information system that we use. And then it gets uploaded into, to DEES, and then they can, they pull the numbers from there.
Huh, okay.
And I'm not exactly sure, exactly, you know, what goes into that and which, which numbers and incidences in students, but we can research that for you. I'm not sure if Mike has that information on the top of his, his mind either.
I can, I don't have the chart in front of me, I'm trying to, I don't have the document, but I'll take a look at it right now. I can write to Sheila in the chat box. But I'm very familiar with the system, and like Ellen said, we have a, we have a system that talks to DESI, all districts do, as we update our disciplinary on the fly. It's, it's talking to DESI's system, and they do compile, they compile all the data on each district with, through there.
Mike, Roel just shared it on the screen. Can you see it?
And I also know we have two minutes left.
Well, this is important. The, 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 the schedule is a guideline. It's not, we're not held to it. We're not 100% locked in. I do appreciate us to be conscious of our use of time.
I, I had another question, Roger, if, if it's okay. The, the first page, when we start talking about the the actual design elements, and we refer to our mission, we went through that whole exercise of our mission as it relates to what we worked on. Is this a different mission? Or is this building off that same?
This is straight from the charter, Ben. So if you take an actual look, so everything with this accountability plan has to link back to the, to the charter.
Document, oh, the documented charter, okay.
Yeah, so you do have the key design elements, and, and this little parentheses is, this is page, page 20. That, that's referring back to the original charter application.
Okay, alright, so yeah.
If the, it, it's actually quite interesting if you ever want to take a look at it on the website.
Alright, I'll take a look. I just wasn't, I, I was just wondering if, if that's where the source is, that's fine, then it makes sense why it doesn't align with what we talked about, our mission. And then, there were a couple other questions, but if this is all just derived from the, the charter, then this is probably not, not really negotiated. Unless you want to change the charter, yeah. Okay, thanks.
I have, I have just a quick question, and I might be able to answer it on my own, but I will double check. Where it says total number of students disciplined, it's 982, and yet we know we have 966. So I'm assuming that that was counting kids who may have left after that.
This was actually based on, if, I, I think, Roel, if you scroll to the top, this actually isn't even current year. Oh, here it is, that's actually in the bottom. This is 2018, 19. That's how far back the DEES numbers are. So these are our current numbers. This is actually the, the, the outer school suspension rate for the 2018, 19 year. Because that, that's just how often they, they update the data. So we did actually have 982 students in 2018, 19.
Okay.
It, it was over and above our charter, but.
Okay.
That's what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so this is actually even old data, you can't really connect this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, just sorry, I'm just jumping back in real quick for Sheila. What was the exact question that you asked? Because I've, I've taken a look at the chart now. What was your original question?
So the second column, students disciplined. And I'm just curious, does that number reflect, so an individual student is disciplined, and he counts as one. I'm sorry to use he, I'm not saying girls don't get disciplined. If he then commits another disciplinary offense and is, is disciplined again, could he be counted twice, or is that, so if I have a kid who had three disciplinary incidents, is he counted three times in that column, or is he counted once? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, from what I understand, the student is only counted once. So just, I mean, I think it's pretty clear here, but these are all around sus, these are only suspensions. Obviously, this isn't like detention, Saturday detentions, lunch detentions, all that. This is strictly suspensions from a prior school year. So we had 35 total suspensions in one way, shape, or form.
And I, and I guess that moves into my question then, which is, so when you look at it, and maybe this isn't the, and tell me if I'm, Roger, tell me if I'm off base in discussing this right now, but my concern of looking at it is, when you look at the percentage of kids, if you, if you've mapped it out, which is painful for me, but I did, the percentage of students with disabilities and students who are English learners is a lot higher of disciplinary and of suspension than students in other categories.
And, and that's exactly the information that they're looking for with that, Sheila. And, and so, you know, that's, that's the kind of data that we say, oh, okay. So the, and you start looking at things like restorative justice and, and those types of programs. Remembering now.
That's exactly where I was going, Ellen.
Yeah, yeah, remember now too, that this is, this is data from 2018, 19.
Right, absolutely.
We, we've made lots of changes since then, so it might be interesting at some point. Yeah, we can show you data from other years, because this year is.
Yeah, Sheila, just so you know.
I don't want to belabor the point, but.
Yeah, just real quick to, I, I don't want to keep going either, but the state, the state obviously looks at this very closely, and they'll flag a school, and they'll, they'll come in and they'll talk to you if they think that your numbers are, you know, way out of whack, if you will, in regards to the subgroups. And we've never been in that situation. But like Ellen said, we definitely pay close attention to it.
Okay, perfect.
So a question for Ellen or Mike, when would we have the data for the current school year?
That data is, we could, we could technically pull the data from this year pretty much by, like tomorrow. It's, it's already on, as a, if a student's suspended at school, it's entered into our Reddicker system. Our deans of students will enter it in, and the state has a particular code that all suspensions have to be entered into. Let's just say the number's 9,000. I think it's a 9,000 number. So you type in 9,000 into our system, it talks to the state, and everything is updated to a, to like this kind of chart throughout the year. So we could, I believe, technically get this chart right now if Joanne Doherty, who's our software database manager, you know, she, she could pull it easily for us, and that's what she did for the, you know, she, she did that for the deans this year. And the state will let you know if you have any errors, like if we, if we input data incorrectly, or it doesn't match one of their codes, they, there's an error message that pops up live, real time during the school year. So we are in compliance as far as submitting it correctly. As far as this exact chart goes, or something very close to this, we have it right now.
I was just thinking that for next board meeting, if you could include that, include an update on that in the executive report.
Sure, keep in mind that it was only for six, seven, six and a half months, right, this year, so.
I guess they could technically get suspended somehow while working from home, but yeah, it gets a star like about everything else from last year.
Me and one.
To tell you the truth, again, I'm not involved in the day to day discipline anymore, but I do know that there were situations between March and June, we certainly, you know.
I think we suspended one.
Yeah, well, if I could make a request for, for next meeting, just to include that in the executive director's report?
Sure.
Can I ask a follow up question? I was waiting the chat window. Right where you're at, Mike, with regard to the mediation program that was instituted this school year, does it mean that with that program, students are able to the program and not have disciplinary actions reported against them? So it's a choice, it's a way to prevent, or, I'm sorry, it's a way to more be more proactive and not be reactive with regard to our discipline.
Yes, yeah, you're correct, you're correct in how you're thinking of it. So with peer mediation, it's actually a nice opportunity for some of our upperclassmen. They went through a training program with, with certified peer mediation trainers, right, actually, I think their last session was scheduled for March 13th, I think that was a Friday, or March 12th that week. So that never happened, but we do have that program back up and running. I actually used to run that program years ago. A, a prior administration told, kind of shut it down, but it is a nice opportunity for, for more minor level conflicts. It's, it's great for de-escalating and preventing things from escalating to a serious level. And the trained upper school students, you know, would talk to their peers and, you know, come to an agreement, and it was very successful in the past. And that, yeah, that's one method to look at alternatives to suspension. That's what the state really wants us to do, and that's what we want to do too, is, you know, sometimes suspensions can actually be a reward for a student. Sometimes it's what they want. If they, you know, they, they like to be home, so, in certain cases. So we always are looking for alternative ways to appropriately correct action and educate the student so that they hopefully don't repeat the mistake.
Okay, well, sorry, I, I just parked the last thought. I did see that. Okay, well, uh, sorry, I, I just parked the last thought. I did see that Jess is calling us out again on the timing. Where does, uh, I know we've talked about this or I've seen it in other reports. Where does mindfulness and other, uh, you know, meditation or other techniques work in the basic, uh, ideas around conflict resolution and preventing conflict?
Yep, um, that is in school counseling, um, and also our, um, our health program. And we actually have a few teachers who also use mindfulness practices in their classes.
Okay, thank you.
So other, other questions for Sarah regarding the annual report? I'll take a, uh, taking motion to approve with, with edits and factuals and factual corrections?
So move. My second, Cindy.
That was Maura and Cindy, if I'm correct?
Yep, yes.
Alright, last.
I'm sorry, who's second then? Was it Maura? Cindy, no, Cindy.
Mora, Mora first. Maura first, Cindy second.
Okay.
Alright, last, last call for discussion. Uh, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Lots of hard work. Uh, now the harder work, the, uh, accountability plan going forward. Uh, Ellen or Sarah, did you wish to address the board?
Um, so accountability plan really, it's just a way that the Department of Education makes sure that the school is on track. Um, it's, it's different pieces that we, um, that we, we feel that, that are measurable. Um, and, and it's a way to make sure that we're, we're, um, meeting the objectives that, that we want to, that we want to meet. So when Anders and I came in, um, three and a half years ago, we started talking about the accountability plan at that time because, um, remember Sarah feeling like, like hoping that Anders and I would kind of create something that felt more like AMSA and was more AMSA specific? Um, and so we started talking about it back then and then start, started to talk to the community about it. And about 2018, we had, um, a PD around it and getting people's input. We worked with department chairs, went through a lot of different, um, committees. It went to the community council, it went to a family forum that we sat with parents one day, talked to them about it and they get, took, gave us our input. We also worked for almost the entire year with the ed committee, um, on, on this document. And, um, and there were students that were, that were on the ed committee that year too. And that was the year that Nathan Lee was on the, uh, ed committee. And so we, we pulled all of that together and then what happens is you go, you go through the fatter renewal process, which we did this year, you may remember, we were renewed without conditions. And then the next step after that is then they want you to submit, they say, congratulations, you've been renewed. Now created the accountability plan that's going to cover your next five years. So what you have to do is you have your key design elements, which you see there on the beginning. Then you break those down to objectives, um, three objectives and then one dissemination objective that you, you need to, that they tell you you need a dissemination objective because it's part of our charter. Um, and then the three objectives, those are tied back to the key design elements that are on the first page. Then you have to determine how are you going to try to, how are you going to try to measure those objectives? And so you have to have at least two, um, ways to measure that. Now, one of the things that Anders and I were trying to do back a couple of years ago was we really wanted to, we were very excited about the core values. We really wanted to tie this document directly to the core values. Well, what we didn't really understand is that you can't, right? You, um, you have to actually connect it to the charter, which is what I was saying to Ben. And the key design elements have to be connected to the charter and the word integrity is not in the charter. So we couldn't really, uh, we wanted to try to measure our success in meeting the core values. So we, we went back to kind of to the drawing board with the department chairs, um, starting in about, I think it was January or February this year and said, okay, let's, let's, um, stick with our, our, our key design elements, which we need to do, um, and we tweaked the objectives, um, a little bit and then thought about different ways based on the conversations we had had in the prior two years around how do we measure the specialness of AMSA, right? How do we, how do you, but it's hard to do. It's how do you measure joy, right? Um, and, and things like that. So we, so some things are very concrete. Um, some things we, we tried to, um, find a way to kind of, uh, get to it in another way. Like when we're talking about measuring, um, like kids being involved in academic after-school programming, right? The National Honor Society, Quiz Bowl, um, all of the, actually we have like four honor societies, uh, math teams, things like that. We thought showed joy, finding joy in knowledge, um, putting in that little extra over and above. So that's an example of, of that. Um, and then there's some things that are just, you know, AP scores and, um, how do we measure AP scores? And, um, we decided we'd like to connect it to, um, percentages over state uh, and, um, and, uh, national averages. And then one of the things that I really feel highlights something really special about AMSA is our, is our research program. You know, Scott's come to, to the board and talked about our research program. Everyone that I bring into, to school from the Charter School Association, other EDs, uh, visiting people, I always bring them up to the research lab and put some of those kids in front of them. And I wanted to try to figure out a way how to continue to expand that program, put resources to that program and watch that program really grow. Cause I, I think that it, it's, it's a very, very special part of who AMSA is. There's a lot more we can do with it. So I wanted to add that piece in there. Um, so that's, that's what it is and, and really honestly, we, we, it helped. AMSA does so many things really well. I think some charter schools that, that are really new or struggling or they're, they're looking for this document to give them direction, um, we don't really see it that way. We do so many things so well. We see this document really as, as something that we, we are happy to, to be accountable to the state. Uh, we need to be and, um, and, and how do we highlight some of the special things about AMSA so that the state can see what we're doing here? Um, and that's what that, what that document, um, is, is about. Um, so we look at, we pull it out once a year. Um, obviously, you know, Scott and, you know, the department chairs were very, very, very involved with this all through the spring. Um, as I said, in February, we started meeting a couple of hours at a time to, to hash through this. Um, they know what their departments are responsible for. And, um, and then Sarah and I look at it over the summer and, and, you know, make sure that we hit our goals and then report out in the, in the annual report. That's what it is.
Questions from the board? Jess?
Ellen, I have a question. Sorry, it took me a second to find my mute button. Um, on the list, on the, on the participation in these academic competitive clubs, you men, mentioned Quiz Bowl. I don't see a list in the document. Do we have a, like a working list of which clubs qualify and which clubs aren't?
Yes, I definitely have a list. It doesn't need to be an appendix or anything on the document, but yes, we have a list and I'd be happy to share that.
Is that list tied to, um, in the past, some of the, um, club stipend advisors have been covered by the school and sometimes the stipends have to be covered by student participation fees? And there was a sense that, that that, the basis of which clubs were which was based on which ones qualify? Like which ones were promoting the mission of AMSA? Is that, is, is there a connection there?
It's not. It, it, this is, this is, this is a bigger list. Um, there's, there's things, um, because really clubs come and go and we think that that's okay, right? It's okay for them to come, come and go. We did not submit a list or we're not going to submit a list to DEES. Actually, this document has gone back and forth with them several times and they provisionally accepted it. Um, that probably should be said too, um, because we know they come and go. Um, and yet, you know, um, and that's okay. We just want to get as many kids as we can involved in some of these, that, the clubs that are going to expand their minds and their, their passions.
Anyone else? Hearing no other questions? Um, so you're just like seeking a provisional appro, I mean, uh, approval with edits and factual corrections, is that?
I, I, no, this, this one is all set, Roger. Um, it's already been back and forth to them a couple of times.
Great, okay.
What happens now is it's another amendment. It, after it's approved, uh, approved by the board, I will send the paperwork tomorrow. It will go in as an amendment request and then it's, um, approved by the commissioner. That's the next step.
Alright, so if, so we're seeking approval as written. Uh, taking motion for same.
So move, Raul.
Move by Raul?
Second, Sheila.
Second from Sheila, thank you. Alright, Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick? I believe Nick had temporarily, has temporarily left the meeting. Uh, Jess?
Yes.
Roger, I'm here. I'm sorry, I'm having.
Oh, sorry. I saw you popping it out. That was, I take it I heard a yes?
No, that's 100% on me. Nothing new to the school. Yes.
Uh, Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes, motion passes unanimously. Next up, well, well, thank you, everybody. I know that the, uh, that this plan, this five-year plan is a many, many, many hours and days and months of planning to get here, so don't want to rush onward, but we do need, in the interest of time, we do need to keep moving. Congratulations Ellen and team in getting this, in getting this for another five years.
Thank you.
Uh, Jill, do you get to take the floor to the, to propose the next motion?
Okay, so at governance, we approved, um, the school calendar to be changed, um, at the last minute upon, you know, state guidance, as long as it is in the state requirements. And Ellen, do you want to claim, like, you know, the conversations that you had about the need to possibly amend the calendar by up to four days?
Y-yes, actually Jill, it's even changed since then because, um, because things change sometimes moment to moment right now. Um, and I was on a phone call with the Department of Education, the Commissioner Riley, um, yesterday. And, um, he is in talks with the Mass Teachers Association. Of course, that's driving a lot of these conversations. Uh, there was some conversation around, um, that he may change the requirement from 180 to 177. Um, he is now talking about from 180 to 175. These would add extra professional development days for teachers. Um, he is, um, he has also encouraged us to have our date closer to Labor Day, um, rather than as early as we have it. So at this point, I am, I am in wait mode. We thought, we were told we would find out today of what was finally agreed upon, um, for how many numbers of days that were going to be required for the year, but I did not get anything today. So that's why we're looking, we're going to need some flexibility. Um, we have multiple, you know, calendars set up of, of what that might look like, but we're just waiting for numbers now.
Okay, so since governance has already approved, so usually what happens with the school calendar is governance approves it and then it goes to the full board for approval. Um, knowing that it is most likely going to change, um, the approved calendar is definitely going to change, I should say. Since governor, governance has already approved, um, we can either have the full board give Ellen the same approval so that no matter what happens, it's approved or we could make it so that there's like an executive session that needs to be called to, to finally approve it. I don't think that's necessary. I think the full board right now give Ellen the approval to change the calendar as needed, as directed by the state. So that's my proposal for an amendment for a motion. Does anyone have any thoughts?
Is it a one year? Is this just for this year or is this for all future years?
It's just for this year, Kristen. Absolutely just for this year.
Yeah, given the dynamics of the situation, I think we should, should go ahead and, and delegate to Ellen the authority to, uh, adjust the calendar for this year as needed within the state guideline, within the state requirements.
So I so moved.
Alright, um, so a second to delegate the authority to our executive director to adjust the school calendar for the 2021 school year as needed within the state requirements.
Second.
Second from Kristen, starting with Raul.
Yes.
Jill?
So before you go on, that was Jill made the motion and Kristen second. Is that right?
Correct.
So Raul said yes. Jill?
Yes.
Uh, Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes, motion passes unanimously. Um, next up, uh, like to, now I'm gonna, we'd like to make an adjustment in the governance chair. Um, the governance chair is transitioning from Jill to Sheila pending the board's approval. Um, there is no change in the governance committee content. We are just changing the, the lead of governance.
And Roger, um, I vote, and I told Sheila I volunteered as vice chair or co-chair, anything she needed. If, if she needs me to step in for a meeting, I'm like, I'm her number two. But yeah, she's so graciously agreed to just take up as the, the lead for now, yeah. So I really appreciate it, Sheila. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you, thank you Sheila and Jill for all the servants on governance. So roll call vote? Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Was there a, was there a motion and a second?
Oh, sorry, I was, uh, so you're, you're correct, Sarah. I need a motion to, for Sheila to be the new governance chair?
So move, Cindy.
Well, Cindy and second.
Yeah.
Jill, second?
Liz.
Liz, second? Liz, it's hard to hear. Okay.
Nope, that's fine.
Cindy, motion, makes motion and Liz has seconded the motion. Uh, returning to the roll call. Raul?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
I'm going to abstain.
Sheila abstains. Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. Motion passes with one abstention from Cindy?
Oops. No, one abstention.
Sorry, abstention from Sheila. Alright.
And Sarah, could I ask that you go back on mute when you're not talking? I think you're, you're.
Alright, I believe that is it for votes. Now, now the piece that we've really been looking forward to, I'd like to pass the baton to Ellen to talk about the, uh, plans for, candidate plans for next year. And Ellen, how much time do you think you will need?
Um, I think that depends upon how much time you all want to talk. Um, I, I'm going to try to whip through this as quickly as possible. There, there's a few slides that, um, actually have like some survey results in it. Um, and, and, and I wasn't going to discuss those. I was just going to kind of give you kind of a feel for, for, for those results instead of, um, actually doing that. So I, I think if we, if we move it along, I think we'll be okay.
Right, well, well, we'll still call it a 25, but I expect that there will be an extension to accommodate further discussion.
Okay, I am going to.
Yours.
Thank you very much. Um, I am going to try to. Now I, so I can no longer see you. Um, are you all able to see my opening screen?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can see it.
Okay, great, all right, so I, I'll start out just by saying that it's really hard, that I can't see you, I can't look you in the eye and I cannot read what, what you're thinking or feeling or anything like that. So, um, and that's, that's kind of the way that I, um, that, that I work is, is I, I, off of that, off of that kind of feedback, so.
Maybe we should just say boo hiss now and then, if you want, if we don't like something?
Yeah, a little feedback, a little nodding, I can't see the nodding, so, you know, something like that, all right. So, um, good to see you all, um, anyway.
Ellen, there is a way you can change your screen to see everybody in the bottom while you're presenting it. Can't really tell you exactly how to do that because I'm not looking at it in front of me, but, uh, probably not worth spending too much time right now, but.
Okay, perhaps, perhaps not.
I know you want to see our faces.
I, I do, I, I do like to see everyone's faces, okay. So the razzle-dazzle time today is gonna be really quick, it's just gonna be some pictures of graduation, just so you can kind of see how, how we ran things for the most part. Then we're gonna talk about back to school, we're gonna look quickly at some surveys, quickly at a timeline, gonna talk, um, probably a little bit more about the limitations of our building um, and, um, the proposal that I'm bringing, uh, to you. Keeping in mind though, that, um, actually Padma just brought up a, a, an interesting point, it's a great idea, it's the first time that I had heard that. And so, um, I, I'm really open to discussing that, um, or any other timeline anyone is thinking about, um, but let's start right now. So a little, little razzle-dazzle, because we like it. Um, we want to congratulate the class of 2020, we did have two graduations this past Sunday, it was hotter than I can even talk about. Um, we had it outside on the field at Fort Kicks, we had 67 students, um, and they were only allowed to bring two guests, um, per student. And, um, we used social distancing, want to thank once again Mike Noraki, Brianna Murphy and all the planning committee, which included, um, parent input, students and teachers. So this is the way it was set up, you can see the parents in the background there and the, the chairs were all measured and, and, uh, there was little boxes that were all, um, uh, separated out there where the parents knew where they could sit, it was all measured. Uh, these were some of our students, this is actually the valedictorian here in, in the front, we had three salutatorians this year, so a three-way tie. All great kids, all got a chance to speak for a few minutes and this is how they walked in. This is how they were all sitting, very different from the Hannover Theater of what we're used to. Um, but you know what, they were just happy to be there and happy to be together, we were, we were happy to be with them and so it went really well. Want to give you an idea of how we had the stage set up, you can see that we've got the diplomas, now the kids had received the inserts already in the mail. So these were just the leather-bound, um, uh, little, little booklets for them, you can see Mike there, um, and, uh, we, when we gave them, um, the, the, their names were read by the advisors and we just congratulated them and anyone who's been in, at our graduations in the past knows that I like to hug the kids as they come in, it's gotten to be a little bit of a tradition and, um, so, um, we, we did a little, little kind of hand hugs, uh, when I mentioned later on that I had really missed having that, that personal contact with the kids. Um, but the three of us, Brianna, Mike and I stood there and congratulated each child as they came across. And, um, you can see how far apart we spaced the valedictorian, the salutatorians, Mike and Brianna and I sat out on the grass, um, and watched from there. And there's our valedictorian, there's John Hooly, um, he did a fantastic job, all the kids did speaking, they spoke for about three or four minutes each. Um, and then there's the end, very happy, very happy students, very happy parents, uh, it was a great day of celebration and it was hotter than you wouldn't believe. Okay, so that's just really quick on, on all of that, just to bring a smile to your faces. Um, this is my slides on back to school planning, um, keeping in mind.
Ellen, I'm sorry to interrupt, Jess. Um, and usually at the end of the year with, there's either senior awards night or graduation, we get a list of all the kids and what colleges they're going to and I know that we don't, we didn't have either of those events, is there a way to get that list, I always like looking at it.
Sure, um, Mike, could you ask, um, Lynn to send a copy of the program out to everybody? I think that, that lists all the, the kids on there and, uh, that's great, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I can do that, we also sent out the senior awards already, I'll, I'll double check and make sure that went to the staff.
Okay, super, thank you, I saw that, so I think, I think that one might have, um, thank you Jess. All right, um, so back to school planning, I, I think that, um, you know, as, as Jess and Padma just have talked about, I mean, there has been, I can't remember a time in, in our lives, in my, in my 57 years of walking around, when, when everything has been so uncertain. And with uncertainty certainly comes a, a level of anxiety, right? A level of anxiety for everyone, for, for us as administrators, for the teachers, um, for our parents, for our students. There's no one in the world that's exempt, um, from what all of us are feeling right now. Um, and really, it's, it's put all of us as humans kind of into a traumatic, um, a, a situation. And we've all dealt with it in different ways, uh, but the uncertainty for sure is a, is a, has been a very, very difficult thing to deal with. And the fact that the guidance that we've received, um, it, it's, it changes, uh, sometimes week to week, day to day. We're getting conflicting information, whether we're talking, looking at state guidance or federal guidance. And so it's made, um, planning for back to school very, very challenging and that's why, um, we talk a lot about, uh, fluidity and flexibility and pivoting. Um, because I think we all have to do that as hard as it can sometimes be. But our number one priority is always the health and safety of our students, their families and our AMS adults. Um, and I'm very, very mindful about it, especially the state has a tendency to focus a lot on, on our students and the students are all safe because they don't get sick. Well, I've got 132 adults, um, in that building that I, I need to be concerned about and I, I am very, very deeply keeping each and every one of them, um, safe all the time. But we also want to ensure our students receive a rich academic AMSA experience, uh, because that's what they deserve and we're responsible to make sure that they are receiving a, a, a top-notch, um, excellent, um, education. Um, and, and we all want to do that as educators, every single person in that building, um, wants to give our kids the very best education that, that AMSA can offer, which is, is, which is extraordinarily, uh, extraordinarily wonderful. Um, but also, um, I want to create a system that's going to try to help reduce the overall anxiety that everybody is feeling around returning to school. So I just want to give you a, a background of the back to school committee, we asked for volunteers, anyone who wanted to, to participate and help us, they were, they were invited and encouraged to attend and they got to choose what committees they wanted to be on. We have, we had many, many, many teachers, we had administrators, all the department chairs were involved at some level, um, and the different directors, I mean, the director of accountability of, of, um, student services, um, special education, um, operations, uh, everyone was involved. We actually overall had 67 adults participated, that doesn't include Mike and myself, so 69 in all. And they've been having regular meetings since the end of May. They each one, they're broken up into four subcommittees, um, there was academics and support, uh, academic operations, uh, operations and, um, IT. And they all submitted, um, written reports of, um, proposals. We also did surveys, we did a staff survey, parent survey and most recently a student survey. Um, this is just, as I said, a few little, um, just three of the questions we asked on the parent survey. A lot of them was about how, what was, was based around how things went in the spring, we just wanted some feedback so that we can make our system this year, um, better. But a few pieces that I thought were interesting, now, the last I looked, uh, this morning, I had 633 responses, but they really, um, didn't change anything at all. Um, people generally feel the same, feel the same way about things, but it says the Massachusetts Department of Education is recommending in-person return this fall. How comfortable are you with your child returning for in-person instruction at AMSA? And so 43% approximately rounding, um, said that they were comfortable and the rest, which comes out to about 57%, um, said that they're either unsure or they, um, are not planning on sending their child, uh, back to school and that is their option. Um, the state, state's been very clear with us that if a family decides for any reason that their child is not returning, we need to accommodate for that. Another one of the questions was, if we decide to go fully remote, would, and because we felt that it was the safest option for our students and staff, would you be in favor of this? And we got, uh, 77, rounded to 77% of, of families said that if it was deemed that this was the best, um, option for the students and the, and the staff, that they would, they could support that. And then we asked the same question about a hybrid in-person remote, um, so that a hybrid model is, is, is a model where part of the students are coming in and part of the students are working on assignments at home and then it, it flip-flops. Um, there's a number of different ways to do that, um, and, and there's recommendations for, for different, for different reasons, um, which I can answer questions on if you're interested. But the hybrid model was, was more popular, um, even if it was like a 50/50, um, and that was 82% of families said that, um, they felt that, uh, that remote learning was something that they were in favor of, if it turned out that that was the best way to go. So the student survey, actually pretty close to the, to the parent survey, uh, there was 222 response, responses when, um, when we pulled this. And once again, similar question, um, how comfortable are they returning for in-person? And the unsure at this time and the I'm not comfortable returning was, uh, 58% of them said that they, they weren't comfortable and 42% said they felt comfortable returning. Uh, when they talked about remote learning, uh, if that was the safest option, would they be in favor of that? 64% said they would and 35.6% said they would not, they would rather not. And in hybrid, uh, it was 73% to 26.6, of course with the hybrid model, um, they, I can understand that they would get to see, you know, their friends and things like that more in person and have contact with their teachers. Staff survey, um, similar questions, I just pulled like three similar, this was at 108 responses, um, so far of 132. Comfort, comfort level in terms of their own personal safety, uh, if we returned, um, in a hybrid model. And we have 30% said, almost 30% said they'd be uncomfortable, somewhat comfortable, another 47%. So there's definitely about 77% of folks, um, have some level of, of concern. Um, asked about the hybrid in-person model, um, uncomfortable was 42%. Um, and I'm sure that's uncomfortable for, 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 oh, I'm sorry, wrong question, this was comfortable in terms of how they, were they concerned about student safety? Um, coming in and out and seems like there's a lot of concern around student safety, um, around somewhat comfortable and uncomfortable coming up at about 80, 84%. And this one was if, uh, your comfort level, what's your comfort level in terms of we return to a fully remote system? So how did they feel about that? Um, and that was 84% said that they would be comfortable with that, with that option. And that was, that was according for their safety, not for, there was a whole series of other questions with the teachers around their comfort level actually teaching, um, particular models too, which is not including here, included here. Um, so the back to school plan timeline, just so you know where we are, as I mentioned that we've been working on this since the end of May. Um, not only had the facilitators been, so the facilitators, we have, um, Brianna is, is working with, um, the academic operations group. Anders, uh, Lewis and Kate Driver are teaming with the academic side and student support side, that includes special education and ELL. Um, and then we have, uh, Anthony Montesian who's on the operations side and Erica, um, Petrowski who's doing the, um, IT side of things. So we meet with them every Monday, um, and they meet with their groups. And we're pulling that information together and we're working right now on a, um, draft, uh, written template. This is the three plans that we need to, um, to let the Department of Education know that we have plans for those, we've considered them and a basic idea of what those plans are. And they also, um, asked the question of what are you leaning towards at this, at this point, knowing that that's subject to change. Then we have a finalized plan that is due August 10th. This finalized plan needs to be approved by, um, by all of you, uh, before August 10th. So, so this is something that is brand new this week. Um, up till this week, up till yesterday, we had been, um, told all the way along that this was going to be something that the Department of Education was, was going to let us know what we needed to do, that we were gonna submit plans and they were gonna let us approve, they were gonna approve the plans and they were gonna let us know, you know, you're on plan one or you're on plan two as, as we went through this. And then this week, um, we got a little bit of a surprise when we talked to the commissioner and he said, um, it is now gonna be local control and your board of trustees or your, your school board, depending on if you're district school or not, will have the final approval on your plan. Now, this, this, this is a, a real switch, um, in their, in their thinking. I wish that they had, um, I wish they had done this in June, it would have been really helpful to us because it's put us in a really difficult position where you feel as though somebody else really has control over your community, um, someone who's very far removed from your community. And so this was welcome news to me because I felt that, um, it gave us an opportunity, the people who know our community and can talk to them, um, an, an opportunity to make the decision. So Roger and I have talked about this, um, yesterday and, um, the hope is, and he'll, he can talk to you further about having another, uh, board meeting that we're gonna need to do, we think the 6th of August, um, it'll be quick to take a vote on this plan that, um, that I will be writing up over the next couple of weeks. Okay, so we want to talk now about our facilities limitations and, and all of you have been in our buildings, you, you, you know a lot about them. Um, but here's some, some data that, that we need, we really needed to take into consideration. Anthony Montesian and Pete Jones and, and a few other folks, Rob Luskey, um, and, and Eric and Sean, um, got together and did a, a, um, a feasibility study to, to look at the sizes of our rooms. Now let's remember that, that plan one was that the Department of Education wants as many students in person in the classroom, in the school as possible at one time. And the hope was, is that, that schools could bring in 100% of their students, seat them three feet apart, edge of chair to edge of chair and get all the kids into the classroom with the teacher in the front. They sent us out a, a, um, a little, uh, diagram of what that would look like in a classroom. And they could fit 25 students, three feet apart, as long as they don't move. Um, they could fit 25 of them in a, in a 750 square foot room. And that was ed, you know, edge to edge, just about with a few feet at the, at the front for the teacher to, to stand there and deliver. And we looked at that and I thought, well, that, that's, that's great, um, except that we only have a few classrooms. I know the white building classrooms that are 750 square feet. So we went in and, and we, uh, they, they, they went in and they measured and they, they looked at plans and, um, what we found was that there's 58 classrooms in AMSA, 46 of those 58 are between 743 square feet and 347 square, square feet, that's room 420. And 57% of our classrooms are less than 700 square feet. Um, so there's, there's no way that we can, because most of our classes are, are, are to capacity, especially in the middle school, can we get, um, 24, 25, 26 students, three feet apart, um, in all of our classrooms? We only have 12 classrooms that are, that are larger than that and I, and I believe that it's, um, 750 is, is the white building, I know that, uh, the art room in the lower school is, is large, the chemistry room is large, but for the most part, our classrooms are small and many of them, um, kind of averaging the 600 square foot, um, range. And so that was very concerning to us, it was at that point that, that we turned to each other and said, we cannot bring 100% of our students back into those buildings, three feet apart. Um, that was, that was even, you know, before you, you asked the question, is it, would that even really be safe? And we don't know, no one knows. Um, but that, that's, those are the facts. We also spent quite a bit of time, the group did measuring hallways and we found out that our hallways, um, especially in the, in the lower school building, are, they're only six and a half feet, um, wide. Now, when you're trying to keep students at least three to six feet apart, um, that doesn't give you a lot of space to work with. And our widest, um, hallway is actually only eight and a half feet wide. Um, we know we can do a one-way traffic pattern in the upper school and in the white building. Um, but we do not have, um, a way to do a one-way pattern in the lower school, which of course is the place that has the most narrow hallways. Um, and so ki- kids would be going past each other, um, throughout the day, no matter how many, um, people you had in the building. You could stagger, um, passing times and all, which is, which would be an option. Um, but it would be, it would be a tough traffic pattern in the lower school for sure. Also in the lower school, the staircases, we can make one go up and one go down and all of that, but just so you're aware, the, um, staircase that's. all of that, but just so that you're aware, the staircase that's right by the front door of the lower school is only three-and-a-half feet wide. So, they are, they are very narrow. Also, in the white building, we, there is one door in and there is an emergency exit out, so we do have an in and an out, but that emergency exit also goes through SMOC. And I'm sure during COVID, they would not be excited about having our kids walking by their offices and all that to get out of the building. So, for the most part, we, once again, we could stagger, but you've got one door that is a double door, but but kids are coming through that door, could be potentially at the same time. The feasibility determination was that where we are unable to accommodate one-hundred percent of our students back if we need to distance three to six feet. But we did determine with spacing that we could do a hybrid-type model, just not a hundred percent back with how many kids we have in in most of our classes.
Ellen, just going back to the DCE recommendation of the three feet, do we know where that came from and is there any science behind it? I just am curious on that one.
Yeah, you know, it's it's the World Health Organization. Who has said that that three feet's okay, but everything the CDC here says it's six feet? I I do know that's a real concern for people. But that's that's where it came from. Okay, uh, let's see. So, other things to consider about AMSA and our unusual facilities, and that is ventilation. Now, I I just, I do want to let you know that the the guidance on facilities and operations and on the busing guidance just came out last night. I got it at ten-twenty-four is when it actually dropped into my inbox. So, this is very new information. We're just processing this information today. But just, I don't have a slide on it, but to give you an idea on the buses, it's a it's a thirty-two percent capacity on the buses. They're only allowing us to fill those buses by a third, okay? So, think about how that would have to be staggered to bus all of the Marlboro School students if we came into the building also. And then, you know, regional busing is is a whole nother, whole nother conversation. But this all is new information, along with this ventilation, and we've been waiting for this because we know that the HVAC system and ventilation at AMSA is is a significant concern to all of us. And the DCE recommendations, I said, they haven't been fully processed yet because we just got them last night. But after speaking to Eric today, we know that we need a full air balancing evaluation and report done. And this needs to be done by a specialist engineering firm and we need to have one of these done on all three buildings. And this measures the airflow. Now, Eric did a a great job, or he tried at least, to educate me a little bit on how ventilation systems work and how we need ten air exchanges per hour. And what that means is that the the air changes in in the in the whole entire room ten times every hour. And he said, Ellen, the air goes in and the exhaust air goes out. And that's the way, that's the way that it works. And the only way that we can actually tell if that is set up properly and we're getting the correct airflow in all three buildings is by is by doing this full air balance evaluation. And so, I talked to Roger about this earlier and have asked Leana and Eric to to contact the right people and and get that started. Eric feels that we're probably in pretty good shape in the one-sixty-five building. We own that building. He said that when we changed hands on the upper school building a number of years ago, that one was done and that it was okay at the time. And but we need to, we need to know that again. It's been, those those units, our HVAC system is from the early nineteen-eighties, he said. That's the original systems to the building. And the landlord has been working on the HVAC system in the lower school building this But but we we, especially in that building, we really need to know what is happening in that building. He's in the process of putting some separate units into that first floor. He has told me that he's pulling out the 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 HVAC equipment that's in the brick building out there. Once that goes off, he's doing that this summer and buying new replacements. And when that, when that happens, it's going to completely remove the heat from that building and it's going to, it's going to reduce the the air conditioning down to twenty-five percent. So, that building is certainly vulnerable and we should be concerned about it.
Ellen, Ellen, I have a quick question. Are these restrictions because we're a school or are these restrictions based on buildings in general under COVID operations?
Um, so, are you, do you mean about the ten, the ten air exchanges per hour?
Yeah, I mean, is any of this dictated by the the state or is this stuff that we're doing as against some sort of recommendations of of another entity?
So, there's there's, there's thirty-five pages of recommendations. The ten air exchanges per hour, that is typical for an office building for a school. That that's the reg, that's what it always is, that's not different just because of COVID.
Right. And if we don't meet that, is that a condition of which we we lease the building or is that on the tenants of the building?
That is on the landlord.
Okay. So, wouldn't 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 he have to do these these measurements and prove back to us that he's meeting the guidelines?
Um, this all happened today, Ben, so we're.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough. I just didn't know if you, if we were responsible or or they, and you'll figure that out, I guess, then, right?
Yeah, I I, it's on my to-do list. I I wanted to let the dust settle on it a little bit and let Leana and Eric do a little research and then I'm going to reach out.
Okay, sorry. Yep. All right, thanks.
This is, of course, a very important conversation. I'm just doing my duty to say that we are past twenty-five minutes.
Okey-doke. All right, so, this is, as I, as I mentioned here, this is, this is a concern, this is is rising quickly up our list of 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 concerns. All right, other just little facts for you to know about AMSA's air movement challenges is that on the buses, you'll see on the school buses, is that they're requiring buses to drive with the windows down and that's to keep air moving. So, this is an important thing. But just to keep in mind that our windows don't open in the upper school or the white building because we're an office building and they don't move. And that's why, one of the reasons why this HVAC system and the ventilation and the filtration is so important to us, because we can't open up windows. We also wanted to just bring to your attention that two of three of our teachers' lounges are also internal rooms and have no have no windows. We have multiple offices with no windows. We even have four classrooms that have absolutely no windows, they are in internal. And and as I mentioned here, the systems, the HVAC systems are from the early eighties and are well beyond their useful life now. We also, during hot spells and during very cold spells, we use portable fans and portable heaters to bring extra air in. The systems are not reliable, which is why our landlord is working to 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 fix the one in the lower school now because we have lost days of school when it it has just given out, especially when we're in a real cold spell or real hot spell. And I think, suggest, and some of the other folks could tell you, Padmaja, who work in the upper school, is that we have continual AC issues there. All right, so, this is what we're proposing and and Padmaja talked a little bit about this.
Especially with my computer labs, like emanating all the heat into those rooms.
Exactly. So, this is, this is what we're proposing. And once again, this is a proposal. We're happy and willing and I'm here to take feedback. I was very intrigued by by Padmaja's suggestion, certainly something that we can, we can talk about. But this is what I was thinking, once again, kind of brainchild, sort of born on Monday, because I, we have been so uneasy about this and 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 just the thought of putting people's lives at risk when we don't know, we don't know. And and I'm really hesitant to to do that. It's it's, it's a very, very big decision to make and a decision that that you'll be making with me. It's a lot of weight. So, the, my thought was, our thought was, is, and this was, you know, kind of a collaborative with the facilitators on Monday, is to do remote learning for four weeks, stay on remote learning, and four weeks from the start date. And and then we would come up with predetermined scientific criteria. If X was X number of cases over a rolling fourteen-day period, if other, if it had been determined that other schools being in session hadn't caused spikes in their community, then I think people would start to feel comfortable and say, okay, the other schools, everybody's been in session or some schools have been in session for four weeks and it looks like it's not causing an issue. It's meta-scientific criteria, which will be, as I said, predetermined. Then we could look at possibly this thirty, thirty, thirty hybrid model. Now, this was a, this was a suggestion that came came out of the back-to-school committee. It means that there's much fewer students in the classroom. Now, you know, I understand, I have heard some some feedback around, well, it is, it's a lot more work for the teachers. And that's like, we can, we could present on that at the whole next boarding meeting on what each one of these plans does to the adults in the school community. We're committed to teaching the the kids, but we do need to do it in a way that 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 people can be successful, right? Without, I I could spend hours there. But this thirty, 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 basically, you'd set up A, B, C groups of kids. And for us, all these hybrid models would have to be set up by the students' science classes, all right? Because in the science classes, we have a lot of fixed tables and we can only fit one kid in each table, which means in science classes, we can only ever fit twelve to a maximum of fourteen kids per room because of the way that the rooms are put together. So, we determine half of the kids in the science classes or a third of the kids in the science classes and then set up their cohorts that way. But they would go for a week, they'd be homeworking for two, they'd go for a week, they'd be homeworking for two, excuse me, and it would rotate that way. So, this is a easing, slow way to start seeing if if we can do this in a safe way. We do that for a period of time, watching our data. If we're starting to see spikes, either not, hopefully not our own community, but we're starting to see spikes around the state, we we, we go back to remote learning, we stay in remote learning, whatever the science is telling us. But if it looks like the thirty, thirty, thirty is working, teachers are feeling comfortable, the state numbers are looking good, then we could move to a fifty, fifty model. But then we need to stay in a fifty, fifty model until the state says you can return to school and you don't have to do the physical distancing. Maybe we have to wear masks, but we don't have to physically distance if we get to a point where they find out that we can do that safely. So, this is, this is the the proposal. I, let me just see. Okay, this is, this is what the classes, the class proposal would potentially look like. Now, it's probably not.
You might want to interrupt to, because I think, a good point to clarify this. Can you go back to the the four phases and whatnot? So, I'm trying to reconcile this with Padmaja's input at the beginning, an open comment. And what I heard is that the stress and the concern is coming from uncertainty, which, of course, we understand, but also having multiple plans of changing between one plan and the other. So, i- is this compatible with that concern or do we still need to work on this to make it simpler? And if it's not, maybe it's a tough question.
Raul, is that, is that directed towards me or Ellen?
Well, it's it's towards Ellen, but I guess if you can clarify how you feel. I mean, I'm trying to see whether your comments has to do with this needing some more work or.
Oh, it needs work. Raul, this need work, this needs work. This was, as I said, this was born Monday. And we we were going, when Monday, when it was created, we thought that we were having to send something very rigid to the state. We didn't find out till yesterday that the state was actually going to let us make our own decision with your approval. And and so, this is all very, very soft.
Now, so, let me rephrase then, sorry. What she was asking for, I guess, was for the teachers not to have to to plan, so you have the plans in your pocket and you know that after four weeks, we're making a decision on the next step. And then they're, they'll be ready to implement that next step regardless of what that decision is, right? So, and I just want to make sure that's the ask. I I know that this is not a complete plan, but I'm just making sure that this is at least compatible with that idea.
So, if I may, like, I want to clarify a little bit on my public comment at this point. Ellen, if I have your permission, I am with Ellen on the fact that this is brand-new. We all agree and all the teachers kind of know that this came out only on Monday and that the thing has changed yesterday and this, everything is kind of brand-new, like, nobody, not, not everybody has all of this information. People who attended the meeting with Ellen probably, like, you know, know a little bit of it and then a follow-up email that went to. But I was a part of the academic operations committee today, so there were a couple of things discussed over there. That's where I thought about this, like, you know, when we were talking about the numbers of Phase Two and Phase Three and going back and forth, that's when it hit me to come up, to think about this, like, you know, why can't we have a determined time from there? So, if Brianna was there, she she would have talked a little bit more about that, but like, you know, Ellen still have not met with Brianna, so that's why Ellen doesn't have this information.
Yeah, thank you, Padmaja, I appreciate that. It is, this, that was news to me and and actually, it's a, it's a darn good idea, but we haven't talked about it at all. And and but it's something to consider. I think so, there's, there's this balance that's really hard, Raul, and and everyone else. And I would appreciate input. The problem that you've got, and 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 this is from, you know, every every ED that you talk to or or superintendent, is that if if you, if you put it out there, do you want to do remote? Do you want to do a hybrid? Do you want your, to stay home? You're typically going to get a third, a third, and a third.
Okay, so, another thing that I want to add on at this point is from between Phase Two and Phase Three. The problem at that point is the cohorts that are being created for the thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three are not the same as the cohorts for fifty, fifty. So, what may eventually happen is we may get to see a group of students a lot more than the other group and so there is a discrepancy in the pace that the students are working with the curriculum. So, these were all the discussions that we were, we we had and, or Tom made a comment. So, those were, we, we as teachers wanted to keep the disruptions in the learning and teaching that needs to happen to the minimum. For that purpose, I came, I I suggested that, like, maybe we need to fix the time of Term One because it kind of makes more sense to have more data collected regarding planning the lessons, how things work, and like Ellen was saying, running all the tests needs to be done on ventilation and other stuff. Everything falls in place and we can prioritize the physical things that needs to happen at school without any limitation. So, oh, students aren't in class, they they, it cannot happen today, kind of thing.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, off the top of my head, I mean, I actually, I actually like that idea, but the thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three idea actually came from the committee. How these things actually work in practice, we we were, we had originally proposed a fifty, fifty, going straight to a fifty, fifty. But there there were concerns about taking steps to bring kids back more slowly for safety reasons. But we don't have to go to that if we're starting to see numbers spiking in the state or nearby communities. So, this is, I mean, this is, this is definitely, they, great conversations and these are the, these are the little pieces that need to be ironed out before August tenth. So, that's why this is very fluid, still, very new. But we do have to have it ironed out, more or less, by by August tenth because that's the, that's the the version that not only is going into the state, but it's going to the parents, it's going to be on the website, and that's what people are going to be expecting us to do. And from what I understand, that about ninety percent of the schools, the district schools in Massachusetts are looking at a hybrid, some type of a hybrid model. But I have, I know another charter school not too far from us who's also looking at a phased reentry and that idea is starting to, to gain traction. I think my feeling isn't so ma- so much about the details in the middle, I think we can work those out and I think that we have a great track record, actually, of 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 working together and figuring out what is, what do those little details look like? But what I'm really suggesting, the overriding feeling around this is, I think we need a phased-in return. But what I'm really suggesting, the overriding feeling around this is, I think we need a phased in return. I don't think we do anything abruptly, I don't think we necessarily have to follow the crowd. And what I don't want. Is to make our community a guinea pig. I don't want to bring everyone back. Just. And to put them at risk. Just to see, oh, is it gonna spike at AMSA? Oh, I don't know, let's wait and see. It just feels that feels wrong to me. This is the first, this idea of phasing people and and taking our time and watching what happens to the other schools and what happens to the other communities, honestly. Not that I wish any bad on anyone, but I wa- I feel a responsibility to protect us. And we don't know, and there isn't anyone out there that can tell us exactly what's gonna happen. So the mother and hen in me is saying, you gather your chicks, you put them under your wings. And you make sure that they're safe until you know that everyone's gonna be okay. And so I have to be able to sleep at night. And if anything happened because I made a lousy decision. That got somebody killed, I have to live with that for the rest of my life. That's the kind of ED you have, I am not gonna be risky with this. And every, each and every soul in our community is too important to me. So that's that's where I am with that, and I'm open to having conversations about this all day long, because honestly, it's all I've done for about five months. So. Um. Just to finish it up, this this proposed class schedule could look very, very different and and it's all really gonna be based around. This four by four, the Avengers are working on it right now, we need to make sure these are longer classes. Um. But this is basically what we're looking at is is their block schedules, classes. There's going to be fifteen minutes between each class so kids can get off the screen and go get a snack and walk around. Um and even if they're in school on a hybrid, we would keep the same same type of model. But the periods, they won't probably be A B C D, because what we have to make sure. Is is that we don't have any teachers that are teaching all four, right? They need to have at least one of them off. That gives them an hour and a half, plus they get fifteen minutes off between each class. So we're trying to to make sure that no one is scheduled um for all for all four of those, so the Avengers are working on that. But that's generally the idea that there is the flex day on Monday, this gives um time to have department chair meetings. Um it uh we could have any kind of training, uh it's prep time for the teachers for the most part, though. Uh because if especially if we are in any kind of hybrid situation, they're teaching kids that are in front of them. They're preparing for kids that are at home. And for the kids whose parents have decided for whatever reason that they can't come back. We have to prep for those kids too, that's three different groups of kids that we're asking our teachers to prep for. That's a tremendous undertaking, so. And then just to kind of end with, there's one of our seniors looking so happy. This is the kind of joy that we want on our kids' faces at the end of the year, they deserve to have that. This is an unprecedented, difficult, difficult time um for for all of us. Um and um, let's see, trying to get back to my my page here. And um and and the thing, and I think maybe one of the things that's that's most difficult. Is. No one knows, no one has any answers, all we can do is kind of go by your gut. Um and do the best job that we all can do leading um this community. So that they know that we're being thoughtful about the decisions that we make. Um that they are our priority, not only our students and educating them. But to keep them safe, to keep their families safe, those who have grandparents living in their home. And to keep our teachers safe. I know I've got fifteen percent of my staff that is fifty nine and older. I've got twenty five percent of them if we drop that age to fifty. We also know that younger people in their thirties and twenties are getting sick as well now. And um and we don't know what the future is gonna bring.
Ellen, I had another another request, since this new, this new uh idea, not new idea, I guess new. Edict from the state saying the board will be the ultimate decision maker, or at least it'll be us. Is it possible to involve us more into the committees? So that we can hear a little bit more, or do you feel like it's still have the committees just present us the ideas and then we just approve them based on your on your um a- analysis?
The only, the only um instructions that we were given, Ben, honestly, is that you need to approve my final plan. So it would be like us bringing the annual plan to you. I submit it to you as quickly as as I can, honestly, I start vacation tomorrow and this thing is due the day I return from vacation, so. You know what I'll be doing for the next couple of weeks, right? And um so the idea is to, is that we we put it together, um I have proposals from all the groups. I'll be processing that, pull them together, there's a, there's a topics they want us to hit. And then um I will get the versions to you um ahead of time and then, you know, we if we wanna. I don't know how what Roger would follow open meeting laws, but any individual questions, I can certainly sit down with with each of you. I'm happy to.
Yeah, I mean, because I mean, I I appreciate and and respect your uh passion to protect. And now some of that responsibility is coming on us too, right, you know what I mean? So I, yeah, I want to share on that, because if if we. Make a decision based on just the data you give us, which has always been great, right? I just am curious, because this is a more serious decision than maybe we've had to make since I've been here in the board, you know, last whatever, nine months, ten months. So I, if we can think of a way, because I feel sometimes, and this is just my my opinion, is that the plans you present to us aren't really. As uh open for discussion, they're more of open for clarifications and then we vote on them, right? Something like this sits into a a different category, right?
Yeah, yeah, you you're right, um you're right, because it's it's operations um and um. And the the that's that the distinction, which Roger probably can explain to us a little a little bit more clearly from the board side of um. You know, the governance side of things um as opposed to the op- at the day to day operations of the school. Um as the word goes, uh but um this is a huge decision, Ben, um I understand the burden of it and um. You know, I'm I'm happy to work uh.
We want, we want to share the burden, you know what I mean? Because it's not just everything goes back to you, because now we're also helping to finalize the decision. You do all the hard work with your committees and then we'll support you in your recommendations, right? Um but in the end, we're all responsible, right? It's not just, it's not just Ellen's decision, because you know, something happens, it's not just Ellen, right? It's our entire school and our entire, you know, uh communities and things like that. So I I just want you to know that we, I I personally would like to share in that responsibility, right? So you don't feel like it's um, you know, it's all weighing on your shoulders and, you know, and and those kind of things. So anyways, I just thought I'd get that that point out there.
No, I I appreciate that, Ben, and we we can work on what that would look like um. But you're right, um at the last moment, the state decided that um they were going to put the burden. Um on you folks, so. Yes.
So can we, so this is all the plan and the transitions and the the slide that you showed was just for the fall semester, right?
Um, well, you know, Kristen, I haven't heard or talked to anyone and and I and I. Can't tell you um how many people I talk to all the time about this, no one can really think. Past, I I can barely think past Thanksgiving. Right, um it's kind of like, like. I I mentioned during the graduation, Brianna and I were were trying to talk about, Anders and I had had this. This tradition where we would talk about on graduation, all the wonderful things that happened the year before and all the challenges, it was just something that we did. And I I didn't have him with me this year, so I tried to do it with Brianna. Neither one of us could remember anything that had happened before March, and I'm serious about that, it's, I'm not even joking. We could not remember anything really that had happened before March, that's trauma. That that's that's, that's in in evidence of trauma. And it and it's the same way going into this. We can deal with thinking about this far, but no one is really, unless it's just in passing, talking about January or February or the spring. Um. Uh you know, which is why I think probably even in Padme's mind, she's thinking first term, okay, we can deal with first term, I understand that.
And what is, can you just share again too, like when you say first term, like when is, when is that?
November ninth, eleventh, something like that, Mike or Sarah would.
First first quarter of the year usually ends first week, maybe second week in November. Uh the semester's end of second quarter ends end of January. Early April is the end of third quarter.
It's November fifth, actually, Kristen, end of quarters, November fifth, I'm looking at one of Sarah's calendars.
Oh, okay.
Third and fourth, the same thing, are there four terms in the school year?
Four quarters, yeah, so we're looking at November, January, very early April, and then June, end of the school year.
Yeah, Tom, Tom typed up that same um. Type of, you know, split at the term, because then you're switching classes and it's nice clean cutover. But are you feeling any pressure, Ellen, for having, you know, media aside, right, and what's going on out there? But any pressure to return in person, like are you getting that pressure?
There, there's pressure coming from every, from everywhere. Um and uh. I think. That it's a very tough balance between. Educating our kids, keeping them safe, getting the economy going. Um getting parents back to work, they need us to take care of their kids so they can return to work, these are all very serious issues. We have a global pandemic and a a global economic crisis, as as you know, we've talked about it. And so that's a, that's a something that we really have to balance, which is why we asked the parents in the survey. Um. If you um, just kind of looking here at my, if you, if, could you, could you, would you support? Um. Yeah, where is that? Uh. Learning at home. Um if if it was decided that a fully remote schedule was the safest option for students and staff, would you be in favor of this schedule? And seventy seven percent said yes.
Okay, that's good.
So that's, that's amazing, that's amazing, that gave us a lot of comfort. And that was with six hundred and nineteen families, as I said, I did go in and check this morning, we had six hundred and thirty three. Um families that had replied at that point and and it was really actually just a little bit more, there was one more that said no. And the rest um had said yes, so it increased that to actually seventy seven point two or something. Um that said that they could support remote learning. And um and and you know, emphasizing the fact that this would be a much different remote learning system than we did in the spring. Uh this would be an actual schedule. Um and and the kids would move through it just like they were moving through a school day, but they have fifteen minutes in between. Um. There's a, there's a lot more that we can do in the spring, it would be real grades, this wouldn't be pass or fail, this is A B C D um grading. And um. You know, the teachers I know have already been preparing all summer, so this was not the same kind of system that we were on in the spring. Uh we had a lot more time to prepare um what we're, what we can do. So.
All right, um sorry, I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
Um in the interest of time, I don't know, I think the biggest question that I'm hearing from people is how would you like to get feedback? I don't know, there's, there's many questions on my mind and I've had more. Con- more conversations with you than any other board member within the last couple of weeks, um. But I don't, I don't know how best to use our time here.
Uh yeah, Roger, that's a really good point, because we don't have to take this vote and make any final decisions or anything until. We're talking about the sixth of August, right, Roger?
Yeah, we're planning to, planning to have a board meeting on the sixth to approve this plan and. Address any other business that would need to be addressed, but I think we'd have a board meeting dedicated to. This discussion, but on the sixth, we're expecting that it'll be a a final, final version. And to Ben's point, if we wish to influence or provide feedback, we would need to be providing it between now and August sixth.
That's true, and and actually, my plan is to have it out to the staff in draft form a couple of days before that. So I won't pass, I will bring anything to you that hasn't been seen by by our staff. Um which, you know, so I I'm I'm on, I'm on short time here, trying to get, trying to get it together um for all of you. And and my hope was that you would pass it on the sixth, but with allowing me edits over the weekend, because I. It doesn't go in until Monday and I just want to make sure that it's right. But, oh, your question, I I just email me, I'll set up a, I'll set up a hour long conversation with each and every one of you who's interested. You can ask me any question you want, you can tell me, give any feedback or anything that you'd like. Um I I understand how this feels and you were just told that you had a very big responsibility and um. I'm happy to have that.
Maybe I I want to interpret Ben's question and ask it a little bit differently. If, I'm assuming this is being handled by the same group that's been working on this for months. And and I don't know what their schedule is or how this is being done, I mean, it's four, it's two weeks. Till August sixth, right, so it's not a lot of time to put a lot of detail into something that has drastically changed in the last two days. So I guess maybe changing Ben's question a little bit. Would it make sense for any portion of the board to participate in? That task force, and again, I don't know if they're meeting every day for eight hours a day, it's not practical, but.
No, their work is done for the most part, I mean, I know Anders and Kate met with their group on Wednesday. Uh it sounds like there was another group, uh Padme's group met today, um their main work is done, they have um. Anders told me that that he's tweaking any updates and changes this weekend and is gonna get that to me, these groups have been meeting since May.
Right, so there's no formal schedule of meetings or anything in the next weeks to get this finalized, I guess, is the answer.
Yeah, no, no, um but it was Brianna's group that you were at Padmeja, so so that's actually academic operations.
Academic operations and and to answer Raul's question, we have been, like Ellen was saying, we've been working from since May. And we have all the drafts of the meeting notes and everything like, you know, going in phases. Because we were still planning for all three phases and today is the final straw when we decided. Like, you know, if it is remote, this is what we need to do, and if it is hybrid, this is what we need to do. At that point, the teachers were discussing about why are we going back and forth? Is there a way to solidify this at least for term one or quarter one? That's why, like, you know, it was just that the suggestions came today, again, as I said, like, you know, Ellen did not have a chance to catch up with that meeting. Like, so she'll be getting the notes from it from Brianna pretty soon, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure she's just finalizing it, so, I mean, I I'm, I, as I said, I'm very interested actually in in mulling that idea. The um, my my only concern. Is considering our families. Um. I think, I I believe in our teachers and on our staff, and I know you do too. And I know that they can deliver an outstanding remote program, much, much better than we delivered. In the spring, not that that not from lack of trying, just from lack of experience. Um and because we were given different guidance in the spring. We lived within the guidance we were given, but we've been given different guidance and at AMSA, we're doing things our our way now. And and we're gonna deliver an outstanding curriculum this fall, I and I believe that that's true. Now, do we do that and say, just jump and say, we're gonna do it for the first quarter? I think we should all sleep on it. And and ask the questions and consider and think about that. Um but I think that it's a, it's a worthy um suggestion.
I can think of, just to throw out a couple of ideas here to see how we can provide feedback, but. Um or and be able to get in, I mean, one is a suggestion that Ellen had that. Board members that were interested meet individually with her. Um a second option I could see would be a possibility of forming a task force of the board of the people that wished to provide feedback. And then the group could meet with Ellen. Um as as an alternative or something else.
Quick turnaround.
I think, I think we have to take into consideration that Ellen and the staff who have been working on this since May. Have probably covered every possible scenario and thing that that can come up that, you know, in their, in their way of thinking. And as she said, the staff is ready to do a remote. Learning uh much better than the spring, in the spring, number one, when the schools were shut down, they had no notice that was gonna happen. And at the time, they didn't know if it was gonna last a week, two weeks, a month, the end of the year, whatever, so everything was on the fly. Now they have been preparing, they know, um I I don't think we need to micromanage this. I think what we need to do is be prepared to give our support.
So let me clarify, and again, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of Ben, because he's the one that posed the question, but again, I'm asking my. But again, I'm asking myself the same question. I'm not suggesting that the board is dictating or changing the plans or, or making changes based on what we think or our experience. I'm suggesting how does the board get familiar with the plan as it gets being put together? Because what's, otherwise, let's say it's August sixth, which is again, two weeks away from, from today. And we're being asked to approve something that we saw that day. So, you know, just like if we get the, the minutes, the, the day before a board meeting, and we read them while we're in the board meeting, it's different than if we get them a week in advance and then we look at them. So if we tell Ellen, hey, you need to be done by next week, so we can have a week to look at it, so we can approve it on August sixth. I think that's unrealistic because that's going to make Ellen go nuts putting something together in one week. So instead of doing that, why are we not part of the process? So at least a portion of the board knows what we're approving because we're, before we approve it. So it's, it's not a question of, you know, we need to get, be involved to dictate what's happening. It's a question of we need to be involved to know what we're approving.
Yeah, and, and that, that's exactly what I was getting at. I'm completely, I'm not looking to any way influence what is being done. It's just to be more knowledgeable of the details, to know exactly what we're, I don't know what that is, but what we're signing up for, right? In terms of a community and a school. So, because we ultimately need to answer the question. And, and that was the other one I was going to ask Ellen too. At some point, you'll know to tell us what the state says if someone gets contracted with COVID, right?
I have that.
Yeah, and so that's the kind of stuff like also would play into this because we'd have to also pivot in the event that we started with, one, we know those liabilities. You, you referenced data points that you want to do from a scientific point of view. Will, will those be part of the plan as well? You know, to, to those, you know what I mean? So all of those things are going to be presented to us real quick. And, and we're just going to have to, and, and not to don't trust you, and I don't want to be in those, those conversations, but just want to be brought along on the journey so we're feel more in, uh, informed by the time we make that decision, I guess.
Yes, can I make a suggestion? Um, I like Roger's idea of a task force. I think the decision that the board really needs to make is, or to assist the school in making, is whether it's the full remote for the first semester, whether it's the thirty-three, 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 or what, you know, it's, the board is probably not going to be anywhere near the details of curriculum and how they're teaching. It's just more the decision of what we do that first term. Do we go back fully remote or do we pick one of the other plans? So if the board task force could, like, be involved in that decision, then, because that's really what we're voting on. I think that would be a good way to go as far as the board is concerned.
You're voting to approve the plan or not, I, I think is, is the, is the ask. And I agree with you that the responsibility of that is weighty. Because if we put the community at risk, then.
And, and again, just to clarify that, what you said, Ellen, you're going to recommend us a option and we vote on it? We say yes or no? Or you're going to offer us your two top two, your top, or you don't know yet?
No, it's, it is a, um, there is a do, 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 do. I have a, um, okay, so there's, there's parts to this. It's like, it's a little glossy booklet because it's got to go up on the website. And they'll have to, it starts with an executive summary um of the proposal. There's a letter from me. There's a description of if we were to do an in-person model, what that in-person model would be. It, uh, we have to put in the plan of what the hybrid model would be if we were, um, going hybrid. And we have to usually put in.
Sorry, Ellen, I don't mean to interrupt. Can everyone please mute their phones? There is some awful feedback coming through, and this is very important.
Um, okay, I just, so I, I agree. I don't think people probably heard me. So there, it's very prescriptive of the different sections they want. They want an executive summary, they want a letter from me. Then we have to go into a section and describe that if we were in person, what that model would look like. If we were a hybrid, what that model would look like. And if we were remote learning, what that model would look like. Then we have to have another section on what is, what would we do for the kids for out-of-school, um, out-of-school time plan. So what, what the kids are going to do on the weeks that they're home. We have to describe, um, or, and sorry, that's also a plan for students whose parents have chosen to keep them home full-time. And we also have to create a plan for, uh, what, how we're going to support students on plans. Um, and all the professional development plans that we have for teachers. And um, and any other information that, that we deem that's important. So when, when people actually look at this document, they're not going to necessarily know that, that the choice. It's what plan we would do under what, whatever ends up happening. Now, we probably would write it up a little bit differently. I think this document was actually created back in the, in the time when we thought that the Department of Education was going to say, you're on plan one, you're on plan two, you're on plan three, depending upon what the science was saying in the state. As I said, they pivoted from that some. And so I think our plan would, would have these components, but it would also be um clear what we were going to do, at least for the beginning part of the year. It has to be because if it's, if I, if it's going to be useful for our families, they need to know what the plan is. So this now appears to be outdated.
So, so will you be presenting us that document for us to make our decision?
Yes, Ben.
Okay, that, that, I guess that's what I'm, yeah, I guess I was, maybe that makes more sense is you prepare that, that's be presented to the state. The state will approve it or disapprove it or whatever, except we'll vote for which one gets put in place.
No.
They won't, they won't comment on it?
No, they're not. I have to submit a template with a brief summary of each plan and where, what I'm leaning towards on the thirty-first of July. That doesn't need your approval, i- it's just coming out of the committee. So that's a template, that's, that's, it's very easy. That, this, originally, it was going to go like that, that we were sending it to them, they were going to approve it. Now they've decided it's local decision, local control. We create the plan and the board needs to approve it or not. And this is the same for all of the different towns and their school boards. They'll be voting as well. So this is not just a charter school thing. And this is new as of yesterday.
Okay, so we'll receive that report before August sixth. We'll read that whenever that date is, like to Raul's point, like, we're not going to get, you know, obviously say, I need a weekend. So whenever you get that to us, it'll be our responsibility to read through it, understand it. And then we'll vote on August sixth based on the data contained in that document.
Y- yes.
Okay.
All right. That's, especially, I think the, the, I'm hearing some consensus here already in, you know, first, these plans, like it rests this whole school year, it's going to evolve as we go. You know, we're going to approve something August sixth, and new, new, new events will happen August seventh, and we'll continue to react.
Yes.
So what consistently I've heard is that we are, the, the current, the consensus plan is that we are going to open remote for the beginning of the school year for some period of time.
Yes.
And.
That's my ask, that's my ask. That's what I've come here tonight to ask you.
And, and so I guess I can then ask, now, I don't, in the interest of time, or, or running late, but this is the very most important discussion. I guess we could ask board members to comment if, comment if they have questions on that, on that specific ask, that we're going to be, that we're going to oh, that we're comfortable with the school opening remote at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah. Tonight.
Yeah, right.
We don't need to vote tonight, yeah. This is just a, you know, sort of a straw poll or consensus seeking to see, you know, is there?
But, but it's an unknown duration, right? So what you're saying is it opens remote, it could be four weeks, it could be a whole, we don't know that.
Right, we're just, we're waiting for, we're waiting for the plan to help us guide.
So, so, so what?
Or, or, or just playing out what's happening in our, in our country, that's all. I mean, it, it, we could make the best plan of, of it all. And as Roger says, it could all just change tomorrow due to the science, due to what's happening.
Just as another thought as we're doing this, Jill, do we need it from governance? Because you're still chair, right? Not, are, are you officially not chair anymore?
Sheila.
Sheila. Do, do we need to just, uh, have any adjustments to our governance based on this? Uh, do we need to clarify anything? Are we just going to go by, we'll just have open, open meeting forum, uh, votes?
I think based upon the circumstances, based that it's like an emergency circumstance, we don't need any changes, no.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay, that's fine. And then, um, from the decision-making point, we'll make a decision on what plan it is. But then the trigger points, those would also have to be probably voted by the board to switch between plans if we're responsible, right? So if data that you referenced, uh, and I'm just trying to get through the process in my head so I know what's going on. So if, in fact, that the data doesn't meet a certain criteria, that triggers another vote by the board to say, switch from one plan to another? Because we'll continue to be responsible for approving the plan, right?
No, I, well, I think we, we would clearly have discussion around what the, what the trigger points are, but the, 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 the plans themselves, that's operational, that's what Ellen would be deciding.
Yep, no, no more than you did in the, in the um spring, really. You're, you're approving the plan, just the way you're approving the accountability plan.
Right, but you, you just, you just said that you're going to present us and we're going to vote on a plan. Is that plan inclusive of all trigger points and changes over the course of the rest of the twelve months? Is that what you're saying?
Um, it, it, it should have some criteria in there, Ben.
That, that's all I'm getting to, is, is either we're voting every time or we're giving you the power that y- your, your approval of this plan is, covers you to make any operational decisions for the next twelve months.
Yes, I think what you're going to see is that at some point, if things start to escalate in Massachusetts, that the state is going to make those decisions and override anything we may be thinking. That's what happened in the spring. But if you, if you remember in March, on March eleventh, that fateful last day of school, um, that decision to close the building down for two, for two days and clean it and, and, and activate the teachers on, on getting remote lessons, that just, that decision was made by me. Um, and so the, and, and I sent an email to the charter school office and said, AMSA is going to be out of school for the next two days, we're going to clean the buildings. And then on Sunday, they, the state shut down. Um, so we didn't have to make any further decisions.
Can I ask, do we need the board's permission to go remote? Is that what we're asking the board to vote here? And then, Ben, are you asking when we decide, when we want to move from a hundred percent remote to thirty, thirty, thirty? Is that a board vote necessary or is that just Ellen's call? Is that what you're asking, Ben?
Essentially, I'm, and that's what I was asking. Or is that first vote, this is what Ellen is asking for, is permission to make those operational decisions under her governance? I mean, it's either one of those two, right?
All we were told, Ben, it, it was that, um, our boards had to vote on our plan. That's all we were told, just the way you would vote on the accountability plan or the annual report, that the board just needs to vote and approve our plan.
Okay, so then your plan will, and, and again, I don't want to belabor this, I'm just trying to figure out. If we're voting to say, all right, we give you full control to do what you think is right over the next twelve months as it relates to restrictions, you know, communicated by the state, then that's one kind of vote. If you have the ability to switch from remote and back and, and, and don't have to come to us, like, that, that's, that's what I'm not clear on.
I don't think there was any clarification on, on that. I will try to make that plan as, as clear as, as I can, um, while writing it over the next number of days.
How about, how about this that, um, maybe possibly a discussion more for governance to figure out more the longer term? I think, you know, we, we, I would view this more that this is a roadmap. Ellen's going to present us a roadmap, we'll get it started at the beginning of the school year. Things are going to change. If there's a significant change to our plans, Ellen should come back to us and, and present the change of plans.
Yeah.
And the governance can help find that line between operations and, uh, governance. Is that?
Yeah, that, that sounds very reasonable, Roger. I think maybe one of the missing pieces here that just occurred to me is that you may not, everyone may not really realize how often Roger and I are, are in contact. Um, if, it, it, sometimes it's, it's multiple times a week. Um, we, we talk at least, um, you know, a, a couple of times, two, three times a month. But my gosh, um, he's in, he's on my computer screen all the time. So things don't just, just magically happen or decisions are, are, are made without, um, you know, consulting and, and, uh, you know, any of you could reach out to me at any moment. And, and I hope you all feel comfortable doing that about anything, um, to have those conversations. I, I should be very accessible to you.
So Ben, does that answer your question or does it just muddy the waters?
I, I think it's, because the, the edict came out yesterday from the state, there is no clarification about exactly what that means. I respect that, and I don't think we need to belabor it, be, whatever the word is I'm trying to say.
Closing thought on that, the only thing that changed is that the state was telling us before, get ready for multiple scenarios, we'll tell you which one's going to be. And now they're saying, you know what, we're not going to tell you, you figure it out. And when they say you figure it out, their way of saying that is your board needs to vote on it to figure it out. So the figuring out part is, is the only thing we're, I, I guess.
I don't think so. Well, I don't, I don't think that's it at all. They want the schools to figure it out, and they just want you to say yes or no.
But yeah.
It's a governance thing.
Yeah, I agree, sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah, it's a governance thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. And I think we've gotten as much as we can out of this conversation. Um, you know, Ellen, if you have particular areas that you need feedback on, uh, let me know, or, and board members have particular questions, talk to Ellen directly or reach out to me and let me, I can let you know. And, and August sixth is coming not far away. Um, next, so are people, does August sixth work for a quorum of the board? For a six P M. meeting?
It works for me.
It works for me, Cindy.
Any, any, uh, challenge? I, I, no, no, I'm here, I'm not hearing anyone who's saying it doesn't work. So we'll, we'll go with that as a plan. All right. Um, last questions for Ellen at this point. Jess.
Wow, my turn. All right. Um, so, um, Padmaja, you know, when she popped on, which was great, um, kind of said some of the things, although I'm not in that, um, committee that she's on. Um, but here's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. Uh, number one, we heard from our union steward that the board and, um, and the teachers have reached a verbal agreement on a contract for next year. So that's good. I'm sure you'll talk about that in the executive session and whatever, but I thought that was worth mentioning. I know it's been, um, I'm not part of that process, but, uh, it's, of course, a difficult year to work out these negotiations with so much uncertainties about budgets and, um, and all of those things. So, you know, thank you to everybody who, who made that happen. Um, I guess sort of, of course, the big topic is, you know, how are teachers feeling about back to school? I think you kind of got a sense of that. Um, but it's, it's, it's really, it's scary out there. And, um, I think one of the things that I have learned listening to all of my colleagues is that there's really not consensus on this. And I think that that's one of the things that makes it really, really difficult. There are teachers who are scared for their own physical health. There are teachers who are scared for the health of the people they live with. There are teachers who are scared for the health of the students, of course. I mean, everybody is concerned about students. But, um, it's, I think, a little bit scary because the, the world we live in has politicized even these, these health issues. Where you get your data from is a political decision. There's conflicting data, there's changing data, there's confusing data. Um, people are afraid to say one thing because it makes them look political when they're not particularly trying to be that. Um, and I, I think that this is a really, um, it's, it's, it's difficult to be a teacher. Uh, there are teachers who are facing some really difficult issues now that we're hearing that there's going to be a lot more local control. Of course, there's upsides to that. But one of the downsides is if you're a parent who is a teacher and the school that your kids go to makes a different decision than the school where you work, you might have some real serious childcare issues. If the school where your kids go is remote a hundred percent and your kids need to be home during the day, and AMSA is going to a thirty, thirty model where we need to be in place, what's, what's going to happen there? What are the options going to be for people? What are the options going to be for people? Um, there are teachers who are scared because now I have to teach online, the number of hours it's going to take to prep, to put all of my classes online, to put my lessons online, uh, the number of, the amount of professional development I'm gonna have to do. Um, I mean, there's no such thing as a summer off for the teachers this year. And one of the things that I think is particularly horrible is I know that I am facing a year where I am going to not do a great job. I'm not trained to teach online, I'm not, I know I'm not good at it, I did it in the spring. So I'm gonna, I know that I'm facing the school year where I'm not gonna be surrounded by my colleagues, I'm not gonna have a room full of students in front of me, and I'm gonna put out a product and I'm gonna do the best I can, but it's gonna be kind of a crappy product. Um, and, um, that, that's frustrating to me. Um, frustrated isn't beginning to cover it, actually, I'm despondent about it. Um, and it's, um, it's difficult, I don't know how I'm gonna have kids take tests and, um, not cheat, is that something I need? I mean, that's something I am gonna worry about. I teach AP, what are those exams gonna look like in May? As Ellen said, we can't think past Halloween, never mind what's gonna happen in May. Um, and I don't think that all teachers' worries are the same and what everybody's pie charts look like about where are your stressors, where are your anxieties, what's got you not sleeping at night? We're all over the place. Um, so every, you know, one teacher will say, this is crazy, why don't we do X? And somebody else will be like, what? How could you even suggest X? Why is, you know, so this is, um, it's, it's, it's tough out there and, um, I, one of the things like, you know, we, the, the social media, it's, social media's bad, I gotta get rid of it. Um, the, but, you know, people saying, you know, if teachers who wanna work online, what, or, or if they don't wanna go to school, why are we paying them? Why are our taxes paying for schools? Let's not pay these teachers, they don't even wanna work. Like that's, like, are you kidding me? So I, and they might see the end product where they're like, look, this teacher is doing a crappy job. Yeah, I know I'm doing a crappy job. And that doesn't mean I'm not spending hours and hours and hours of work to produce that crappy product. Um, and, and that's just, that's a frustrating, uh, place to be. So, um, I can't speak for all teachers on this because, like I said, there's not consensus here. Teachers are scared, frustrated, there's no good solutions. And none of this, by the way, do I mean to say is Ellen's fault. Um, I, I don't think there's any teachers out there like, damn that Ellen, why doesn't she let us do X and why does she make? No, because we know that no matter, um, no matter what choice is presented to us or what eventual plan is offered, it is going to be a terrible plan. There are no options for good plans out there. So that is, that's, it's a, a difficult, um, sort of reality to face, that no matter what the final decision is, it is going to not be good. And, um, uh, you know, as, as a school that has excellence as one of its core values, to know that, that excellence is gonna look different, it's not that we're not striving for excellence, but what that excellence is going to be is just not going to be AMSA's excellence. And, and that, that's not a good place for anything to be, for any of us to be. Um, so, yeah, uh, that's kind of a bummer, sorry. Um, the other thing I think is worth mentioning here is, you know, AMSA has been in the facilities, um, quagmire for a long time. I think, um, that some of the things that we're facing right now in terms of coming back, um, and what the limitations of our facilities are, really bring home to roost some of the things that we have not been able to solve. Um, if we had another floor on the white building, which cannot happen at this point, if we had another floor at the white building, that's more classrooms that are 750 square feet, that's more rooms, that's more space, that's more kids that we can allow into the building and have some kind of in-person thing. Um, it, there's, uh, there's no perfect solutions here, um, but I, I think that, um, we've kind of kicked this facility's can down the road for years and years and years. And of course, nobody could have predicted a global pandemic, but, um, we haven't put ourselves in the best position to be able to solve that problem. That's what I've got. I'm open to questions, I know people had questions of.
Sorry, well said, Jess. Uh, questions?
Are, are there any ideas coming from the teachers on how we could have improved our position or, or better yet, how we could improve our position now going forward?
Um, another floor on the white building would help a lot. Um, I, I, in terms of facilities, that, 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 that's the, the quickest one, I think, right? I don't, I don't, I mean, finding another school.
Another white building?
What?
I missed what you said, another white building?
Another, another floor on the white building would certainly, would certainly help, um, you know, putting classrooms there. Um, it, you know, we're, we're squashed in like sardines, we've known we've been squashed in like sardines, we've known our hallways are too narrow, um, and, you know, we, now we, it, it's really limiting the number of decision, the decisions that, the number of plans that we can put forward because we can't put, we have to consider the safety of our students and staff and our facilities are a severe limitation on our ability to do that.
Other questions for Jess? Thank you, Jess. It's a humongous challenge, I can't even imagine. Uh, Maura, parent report.
Uh, surprisingly, I don't have anything. Um, I'm gonna talk about golf and sort of parent, teacher, PTO kind of stuff during the development report. Um, it's been very quiet. I think the parents that I have had conversations with were all sort of sharing a lot of those same anxieties, but from a different perspective, um, that Jess articulated so well for the teachers and staff. Um, you know, it's, it's just all very uncertain and I know that there are, we've got educators in the parent group. Um, I know I teach at the collegiate level part-time and teaching online is not easy. I'm the first one to sort of jump to the defense of any teacher, that someone is online, like Jess said, social media's a nasty place right now. Um, it's not easy to, to shift and transition and it's not natural, I don't think, for everyone. Some people it might be and that's a wonderful thing for them, um, but I would say for the majority of people who are used to teaching in a face-to-face environment, teaching online is a completely different beast. Um, so, that's, that's it, I've got nothing from the parents. I'm sure I will, um, after the survey, I know it's really hard to survey and, and I just wanted to throw this out there real quick. Um, it is hard to survey, I went back and forth with Mike and Ellen about the survey and had some recommendations that aren't necessarily easy when you're surveying that many sets of parents. Um, it's not easy to ask the questions that parents may wanna give feedback on, um, without having like umpteen, multiple choice options and lots of paragraphs for people to sort of go through and, and gather information from. Um, so I think, you know, as best we could, we, we kind of put that survey out there and you guys did a great job.
Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages. Yeah, that's the problem. It, it was almost such a big, well, it, it is, it's such a big data dump of, of, of paragraphs that you, you, you can't, you can't process at all. It, it's, it's, it's huge.
Right, and not with the staff doing it, right? Like if we had to do.
Yeah, it was, it was, you know, so you have 600 now and 33 as of this morning, parents who have done it. And so you're, you're talking about, I don't even know how many pages it is now, it could be, it could be over a thousand pages.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, you know, I know they'll, I know and I know the parents are confident there'll be plenty of opportunities, like you had your town halls throughout the spring, um, for parents to kind of talk this through, but I think, you know, we're just, we're also waiting and anxious, so, that's it.
Right, you know, and, and the, the state still owes us, um, um, they still have not made decisions on the sports, they have not made decisions on clubs and extracurricular activities, um, they have remote learning guidance that they still say they're coming out, and HR, human resources. Um, that's all guidance that, um, they're, they still owe us and here it is the 23rd of July.
Yeah, well, again, you know, things are, things are changing, they'll keep changing.
Yeah, there is one, sorry Roger, there's one question that has sort of come up, but not necessarily in an official capacity. Um, if we are remote and the state approves the MIAA guidance to start sports on September 14th, if we are remote at that time, will we still participate in sports?
We talked to Pete, uh, about that, actually today, Mike and I had a call with Pete. And, um, you know, it could be something where they're not competing, but there's ways that they've found to exercise or practice together. We'll, we'll, we'll be looking at that, but we definitely want our kids to have opportunities, but there's, there's a different cost associated with that too. We can't bust them necessarily, so there's, that's really complicated, but we have been talking to Pete all along, but we did have a conversation with him this morning. We're just waiting for more information because one of the things that, that, that Jeff Riley, the commissioner, said on our call yesterday was, he mentioned the September 14th date, MIAA, and then he followed up by, if we allow them to have sports. Yeah.
Ellen, if I can just jump in real quick, uh, we did, we spoke with Pete at 10 o'clock this morning and, uh, I, Ellen and I and Pete, we all said to each other, if there's anything we can do to give the students any type of opportunity, whether it's just to practice and have inter-squad scrimmages for a season and not be able to compete, whatever we can do to get them, or to provide them with some semblance of a social and fun experience at AMSA exam. And that, that question was brought by one of the students in the education committee, um, the other night, and I know students, they're, they want to see each other, they want to, you know, run around together, they wanna compete together, they, they ask about the after-school clubs all the time. So whatever we can do, uh, within reason, I'm all for, for the students. I'd love to have some form of athletics, physical movements, anything we can do for them, just for the record.
I just don't want them rubbing all over each other playing like soccer. You know, I mean, cause like, I don't know, my kids play soccer and you, and you, you like this and you, you know, I, we gotta be careful, that's all, that's gonna be careful.
Yeah, there's some precedents already though, right? So rec schools are, are playing, AAU teams are playing, so there is Massachusetts sports going on, so, um, there may be some lessons learned and they're not, there's no tournaments, you know what I mean? So it does go back to what you were talking about, Mike, is that there's a modified approach to it, right? So, um, but there is precedence already, so you wouldn't be setting precedents in school, you just could follow on what happened here this summer, cause I have two sportacular kids and they're both, uh, playing multiple times a week, so.
Yep, no, I, I completely, uh, understand. It will be very interesting to see what, what Dee says.
Other questions for Maura? Alright. On to chair business, uh, in the interest of time, although I really, it pains, you know, I think we do need to have a discussion around diversity and inclusion, but I don't think tonight is the night to have it. So I'm going to table that till next month.
Roger, is there anything we can take as homework to make that discussion effective and succeed next time we do have the discussion? Like, like put a challenge on for the board to think about something, because I kinda struggle about what that means, I mean.
Yeah, I think, I'll, I'll take an action item and if anybody wants to join me in the creating, and maybe Liz can help me out, um, in building up a list of readings or questions, thoughtful questions that we can have, so we can have a discussion either in August or September. So I, I think it, it needs a, a meeting of its, a meeting dedicated to that, that's not focused on getting the school open. So.
I would like to see all the board members sort of, I know Liz and I shared resources back and forth a little bit, same with Ellen, um, but if, if there are board members that do have resources that can help with our own sort of education, that can help us to guide the discussion, I'd love to have sort of a purpose for it, so that we don't just let it get tabled time and time again, right? I think it's, that's the important part, right? Is that we sort of take an action item and, and keep touching base on it at every meeting if possible.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, so I guess I'll, I'll take the action item to collect all the resources you've got and other, and get something out to the board so that we can have a set of topics for discussion for either August or September, depending on how our school opening is going. And hopefully we'll be able to do some, do some in August. Next up, Liz, did you wanna give a update on the ED evaluation?
You are mute, Liz. Sorry about that. Um, so we do have all of the evaluations in as of now, um, unfortunately, Roger, I had a family emergency and I didn't get a chance to reach out to you to see. I can, at this point, generate the report and get it out to all the board members and then we can, um, plan on having the, um, the memo written for, uh, for the August board meeting when we would deliver the official memo. If you're okay with that?
I'm, I'm debating between August and September because of all the, you know, getting the school open, I don't know that we could do it adjusted in August.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine too, I'm, I, that makes perfect sense.
I mean, I think it's still, when, when ready, I think you should still share the information with the board.
Okay.
But I think, I think in the, in the prioritization wise, I think September might be a better, a better timeframe.
Okay, that's fine.
Alright, uh, questions for Liz or myself? I'll, I'll briefly mention it, but again, the school opening is much more, getting a school open correctly is much more important. Um, I'd like to challenge each of the committees to create at least two, but no more than five, you know, two or three, uh, SMART goals for their year, for the year, to say, here are the three things I am going, we are going to, as a committee, accomplish. And also going to ask the governance committee to take a first crack at the board goals for the year.
Sounds good.
And I, and again, I think it would target the September, uh, target September as the time to present that. And if you have thoughts in August, uh, please share them. Uh, let's see. Um, reviewing the action items, uh, the investment policy, we're still, is still being worked Action item two, I think we're, wanted to check in with Sarah to see that the board members are getting, uh, communications from the school.
Yes, I think what happened was that, um, when I talked to Erica, because Mike said that they were all going out, Mark Finkel said they were all going out, but I think they were going to the board, um, the AMSA emails, and so they've all been linked now. There were a couple that were not.
Okay.
Right.
So, very good, I'll mark that one off. Um, I'm still on hold, I'll be meeting with Ben and so, so we need to, uh, look at metrics. Board governance working on the SMART goals, we talked about that. I'll be meeting with Jill to, uh, review executive session minutes. And Raul, you had the action to check in with Lynn regarding survey access.
Yeah, they're up on the website.
That is done or considered?
Yes, they're up on the website.
Can you repeat, please? It was muddled.
Consider the action item done because I checked with Lynn, but also the, the surveys are up in the website for public to see. I mean, so.
Those six and two are done and the remainder are to be done. Onto, or, oh, major announcements, sorry, and, and just, just a little bit of the thunder, but, uh, we, we do have a verbal agreement with the teachers' union, thanks to the negotiating committee, Ellen, Lyanna, myself, Jill, and Sheila. Um, the, the current plan will be the, it's gonna writ, the final dotted, finalized dotted and Ts crossed, um, it's in the hands of the union right now. They, the next steps is that the union would vote, the union would vote on it next, and then immediately after the union vote, we would schedule a board meeting, possibly either the August 6th meeting, if that aligns with the union's schedule, or the standard August meeting, or we'll just call a special meeting to vote and approve the contract. It was a, it was a well-done process, um, someone's typing. And, uh, compliments around for everybody, we, we, we got to the finish line and I think We got to the finish line and I think we have a good and fair agreement to cover for the next year. So with that, I'd like to pass the baton to Governance, Jill or Sheila.
And actually, I just want to add Mike was on that committee, too.
Oh, sorry, yes.
So, yeah, I can just sum up with a few things. The updated bylaws are still being reviewed. We submitted them June 26th, and so we're just waiting for the state to approve them, but it should be a rubber stamp. But Governance was also considering a few policies and diversity was one of them. We talked about it and we thought maybe that at least as far as the board diversity is concerned, that it might be better to include that in an overall recruitment policy. So board recruitment would include a big section on diversity. So I think that's something Governance will work on to propose to the full board. Then, like you said, the investment policy, we would probably get to in August or September. And then Ben mentioned the collective bargaining potential policy. And we discussed that and we thought maybe it might be more of a guidance that we would need with regard to collective bargaining. And that's more due to the fact that every two years, the situation is going to be so different. If we stick with the same attorney, if we have different board members, we have different executive director, we have different circumstances, COVID, non-COVID. We're not sure that a policy dictating how collective bargaining should go is not going to be as useful as maybe just some guidance as to, you know, who has authority to make this decision and who has authority to make that decision. So that's where we were going with that, but I'd like any input if Ben or anyone had any input on our discussion about guidance versus policy. Although targeting worked out well this year.
Yeah, I just, I mean, for me, it just sounded like there was a lot of gray area last time. So if guidance or policy was either way, just one or the other would be in place, that would be fine of me. Just that there was clarity that, you know, what happens in this situation doesn't necessarily need to be documented as a policy, right? If it was just guidance and it's worked out, is that the question, Jill, or?
Yeah, that's what we were thinking as we discussed it. But, yeah, I think if anyone had a stronger opinion on whether it be policy written down in our policies or if it was better just to be guidance. I mean, we'll.
Yeah, policies withstand any of us leaving, right? Guidance is more a short-term approach, right? Because guidance is lost in any of us leaves or Ellen, you know, God forbid Ellen changes out or whatever, right? But the idea is that guidance is not a written in stone thing, right?
Right, and that was part of the problem because the circumstances were so different between each collective bargaining situation. So we didn't feel a policy could have been written for any of those three situations. But we could look into it more. We could look into it more. I just.
Yeah, and I don't want to be disruptive. I just was curious. I mean, it was clear in the last call, there was a disconnect. And we figured out that it can be fixed without any kind of policy. That's fine. But there was no clear definition of who actually had what responsibility when it came down to, you know, a breaking point or a decision point, right?
Perhaps some kind of document that Clara, that just sort of put all in one place, the institutional memory of the process in the past to guide kind of future. It's sort of because it happens so infrequently, especially if there's a two-year deal when there can be a lot of turnover. And it also often happens in executive session that maybe having some kind of, some way to kind of let people who are new to the board into the past workings of the process might be helpful. That's just a suggestion because I'm not really part of the process.
No, that's a good suggestion. Well, then I will say then Governance can probably discuss it again at the next meeting and further research, you know, maybe that's the best way to go forward would be.
But again, Joe, if it's just me that has a concern, then I'm okay with being outvoted, that it's not a big deal. That's fine.
No, because you brought up a great, it was a very situational issue. You know what I mean? So I don't know. If there's a way, though, to even document the past, I mean, obviously, we have executive session meeting minutes, but, you know, just so that people are learning from the process. We have to document how things have gone so that we can learn from it as opposed to maybe, like Justice said, as opposed to maybe making some formal policy.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, I want to just support Ben, too, because, you know, I think in some cases, it kind of goes to the earlier conversation we had around there's discussions and debate and decisions being made that not necessarily everyone on the board is aware of all the points. And then we get together and we have to approve. I don't know if that's the way you were going, Ben, but it feels like that's potentially similar in this situation.
Yeah, and when those ambiguous cases come up, these are situations that because of our history, we don't have a lot of precedence. Doesn't mean that in the future, more of these things won't happen, but yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, Kristen, that's kind of where it's getting at, so.
Okay. We will definitely discuss it again in Governance. Then with regard to the board self-assessment, we created a mini task force and Governance will report to the full board on the results of that self-assessment next meeting if time permits. And then finally, I wanted to welcome Samini again. And the Governance Committee did appoint a mentor for Samini. So Liz is Samini's mentor. And if you have any questions, Liz would be your first point of contact. And thank you, Liz. And that's all I had.
All right. Any questions for Governance? All right, thank you, Jill, and the Governance Committee. Kristen, finance, anything beyond the budget?
Yeah, I'm just going to give some highlights. June is the last month of the finance year. And Leanna really made us all very happy on our meeting this week by letting us know that on the last day of June, the school received an extra $287,000 related to true-ups, primarily from Marlboro, I believe. Leanna, feel free to chime in. And so that was good news. Certainly.
Marlboro spending was higher than they had predicted.
It was Marlboro, yeah, thank you. And so we'll certainly be spending all that money to get the school ready to open. So that's good news. From an expense perspective, as Leanna goes through both the audit and tying up the year, there was some additional favorability both between what the original plan, again, it's very similar to the budget, what the original plan was versus what actuals ended up being under the new model. And of course, everyone's out for the summer. There was some additional expense favorability, just over $300,000 as well. So the month of June had some timing and some good guys that ended up bringing another half a million dollars to the bottom line. So for the year, the preliminary numbers look like total income of $15.7 million on a plan of $16 million. So that was favorable by $250,000. And so far, again, very preliminary with the audit and whatnot going on, total expenses came at 14.5 versus 15.8. So again, almost a million dollars of favorability on the surplus line. And a lot of that funding will be used to support a lot of the purchases and costs and whatnot that we're going to need to open up the school this year. So it leaves us in a good, strong position as we enter the next year. So that's my quick summary on the finances. If anyone has any other questions, feel free to let me know. Great job, as always, with Ellen and Leanna on the finances. And Leanna's hot in the middle of the audit, so that's always very, very busy. They both deserve their vacations.
Which they can't take.
Which Ellen can't take. We'll get you somewhere. You'll need a special vacation, Ellen. Any questions for Kristen? All right, no questions. Education, Liz?
Yep, okay, I'm going to give my time back since we were discussing on Tuesday night the return to school plans and there's been a shift since Tuesday night. So, and I think we've covered it in great detail. I think the only thing of note that we did cover on Tuesday night that's worth noting to this group is the fact that there was the, I know we've been forward-looking, but just in terms of looking back on what took place in the spring, the family survey did come back showing that there was 90% participation in most or all of learning in the fall, which I think is fairly significant and extremely positive. And that, you know, there was still the desire to have structured learning for the fall. So 92% had indicated that desire. The other thing was that we had a very, very low number of people who do not have reliable internet. So, you know, even though that number is extremely low, which is good news, I do think that, you know, we just need to have a plan in place for how we address that. Other than that, I'm not going to go over any of the other numbers because I think we went over them in great detail. And I don't, given all of the shifts since Tuesday, I don't want to muddy the waters at all.
All right, questions for Liz? Thank you. Ben, Development Committee?
Sure. So we met this month. And in this meeting, what we basically talked about was the sensitivity for reaching out to the community and asking for money as a general sense. But what we did talk more about is could we do more of a targeted campaign now that some of the details are coming through in terms of what the school will need? And I think Maura offered something like what it takes for AMSA to come back strong kind of campaign. And some of the areas we talked about for those were Ellen made us aware of some of the investments the school has to do in terms of being safe to align with the restrictions pushed down by the, you know, the powers that be. And so Ellen was going to take a look at where the potential gaps were in those activities that we have and where we could potentially create an opportunity for the community to help us out and to come back strong. We also talked about our commitment as an organization to the diversity and inclusion within our school and what ways we could actually do that. So again, we seem to put a lot of work on Ellen, but to ask about some of the ideas that are coming up through her meetings and if there was opportunities for the Development Committee to raise funds or support that in any way. And the final one was to identify any gaps in our technology investments for this year coming up and where they might be targeted. So the whole general idea was not to look for just a general donation to the fund, but to actually look for ways that we could target and help folks help out with specific things related to the pandemic. We talked a little bit about the SMART goals and we'll be forming those after. And I'll let Maura talk about the golf event and some of the things that are going on there.
Yeah, real quick, so we're golfing in like a week and a half, August 4th, which is exciting, yes. And we've gotten some updates from the country, but we have 76 golfers, that says many are allowed. So we have a pool of fields that we're allowed to help, so that's good. It's going to be shotgun start, it's, you know, everybody, the kind of the logistics of the event. But I will say that this committee has been, they're a powerhouse. And it's been fun just watching everybody just kind of dig in. A special thank you, Mark Vital, works as magic with the restaurants in our communities. And we have a ton of restaurant gift cards, which we're doing baskets and prizes, and so it's really good. I want to thank Nick and Liz and Roger for contributing items to the auction. We have a pretty robust auction, which is kind of exciting. There's some sports memorabilia, which is typical at tournaments, but then we've solicited some and you guys have been great. So we're looking to make some, I don't want to give any numbers because I don't, I don't have the budget in front of me right now, although I know Krista Barton did come up with the budget. But we're probably hopeful to raise $10,000 to $14,000 when it's all said and done from this first event in the middle of a global pandemic, when, you know, it's been interesting. We did get some foursomes today, I think that are a little iffy and some don't want to eat inside. And I don't either, to be honest. So, yeah, so we'll have more information by the next time we meet, which will be exciting. But thank you guys for your support and helping. And it's been a really good sort of melding of roles from the different parent communities at AMSA.
Yep, that's all from us. Roger, thanks.
Thank you, Ben and Maura. I'm really looking forward to seeing the results from the golf tournament and the auction. It's a great foundational event and something that we will be able to repeat.
Hey, Maura, quick question for you. The auction, is it going to be online or is it just at the golf tournament?
It is going to be online and we're not going to do pen and paper at the golf tournament. Everybody's going to have to do it remotely on their phones. I got an email actually about 45 minutes ago saying that the guy who we're working with went in and was like, your auction's empty. And Krista and I spent five hours the other night building the auction up. And literally before this meeting started, it was perfectly fine. So I'm going to be putting it in because it's supposed to open at 9:00 AM tomorrow. So Krista and I are frantically working behind the scenes to get it back up. Yay! But the reason it's online, too, is so that everybody can participate, not just golfers. So if you are not golfers, but you still want to support AMSA, there's a lot of good stuff you can bid on. We're going to do, I'm going to put some posts up on social media tomorrow for the community and then we'll work to get an email out as well next week.
Okay, that was my next question. So perfect, thank you.
Yeah, we're thinking the same way there. Excellent.
Did they get rid of, so there's still no food? Is it really just golf and go and that's it, or is there?
No, there is banquet now. There are lots of banquet. I don't know the exact details of how many people, what the seating is and that kind of thing. We went back to them with a bunch of questions this week that we don't have answers to, like, can we eat outside? Like, you have a patio, can we just do that? So, yeah, we're hoping to get the rest of that information in the next couple of days.
Awesome. Other questions for Ben or Maura? All right. Meeting effectiveness. Thank you, Jess. I know this is a long meeting. It's a very important topic. What can we do better or what should we keep doing that we're doing now?
I did not do a good job keeping people on time. You know, usually I'm right on the button with that, but those conversations were just too big and important. No time keeper could rein it in.
So one, I don't know if this is a solution, but it will be an observation. The agenda as set had like five minutes for each topic that I think in advance, we could have told that it wasn't going to be five minutes. And I know our goal is to make the meeting as short as possible. So if you're taking that as a suggestion and put it the real time, there would end up being a very long meeting, which is probably not what any of us want. So I don't know what to do in that case. I mean, like everybody's saying, all the topics that we spent a lot of time talking about were worth the time. So I wouldn't want to suggest to shorten that. And I really don't see how like things that we voted on and things that we discussed could have been moved out to the next meeting or whatnot. But maybe it's somewhat misleading to see an agenda with a five-minute topic that is basically approving an annual report, a significant document, right?
One thing I think we could be better at is being really direct and at the beginning of what we're trying to talk, here's what I am, here's what my ask is. Rather than spending 45 minutes to try and get to what the ask is, which, by the way, I'm going to go on record as I hate using ask as a noun. But so, you know, start off with, I'm going to give you some information. Here's where I'm looking to go with this. At the end, I'm going to want this. So if we can be a little bit more clear and direct about that, I think that that might help focus both questions and just sort of keep us a little bit more directed. and, and just sort of keep us a little bit more directed.
Well said. You know, one, one insight in here is that, oh, I write the agenda and I wrote it at the last possible minute, given 48 hours notice. And then the state changed things. The initial presentation that Ellen had planned was not the one that she gave at all. So it is what it is, but I do like.
I had a wing, wing putting that together. It's just everything.
Yeah, but I do, I do appreciate Jess's suggestion. I think we should really try to adopt that to say, here is what, here is my ask or here, here is what I'm trying to, here's what I'd like to accomplish from this presentation. Is it just an FYI? Is it a request for funds? Is it, I'm going to give you two choices at the end and pick one? Something like that. If you lead, lead with that, it'll help us know where, which way you're leaning, which way you're going as a presenter. All right.
And Roger, one thing that might be different, and, and I'm not suggesting this, I'm just throwing another, it's a question. Given that we're remote now and there's fewer limitations on having to commute to school and all that, how much flexibility do we have on the start time? I know we started half an hour earlier than we typically do. And I don't know what everybody's work arrangements are these days, but speaking for myself, I could even start this board meeting during work hours because I, you know, I have the flexibility. But I don't know if that will mess up with the staff or everybody else that has less flexible jobs. But just one of the things I'm making hard is that's nine o'clock. So, you know, a three-hour meeting that ends at nine o'clock is different than a three-hour meeting that ends at seven o'clock.
Board, what do you think? My, my personal schedule is very flexible because I work from home.
I wouldn't be able to do it. I usually have meetings that run at least till five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, so, so I mean, I think six is maybe 5:30, but six is, you know, better for me too.
Yeah, just a lot.
So we, so I'm hearing, why don't we, why don't we stick with six? We can, I'll, I'll send out for, I can see if for like the August 6th meeting, if it's quote unquote, in theory, it's supposed to be short, we might try 5:30. So let, let me know if 5:30 is a problem for the sixth. And we'll give that a try. Anything else? Let's see, we talked about the ED evaluation, we talked about SMART goals. We, I've talked about the challenge already for the committees to draft SMART goals. So I think we've, and I, and I think that we might start a SMART goal discussion in August, but it's more likely to be September. Sarah, did you have a summary of action items for us?
For today, it's, um,
Yes.
Mine to edit the minutes and mine to edit the annual report. Ellen is to bring current discipline data at the August meeting. And then the committee SMART goals and governments to discuss board goals.
Is there anything else that we're missing from action items from today's meeting? All right, hearing none. I'd like, and then I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss purchase and lease of facilities, legal strategy and strategy for negotiation with represented personnel. And we will not reconvene because.
Just a quick question before we move for that. Is there a separate link for that meeting?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, yes, Liz, there, there is. One second, I can tell you which account it went to yours. It went to your Gmail, Liz.
Ellen, while you're looking that up, I just have a process question. I, I, I'm, one part that confused me was I think Sarah said that the vote votes today, but then there's some other process that I go through before I participate in these other discussions, correct?
So it goes into the, the state and they have to approve it.
Yes, okay.
But you'll, so, so Samini, you'll still be, we will still invite you to executive session? Which, but you, just like in this regular board meeting, you're, you don't get, you're not allowed to vote at a board meeting until you get the official approval from the state.
Okay, did you vote against it or no? Either way is fine.
Uh, yeah, I will, yes, I will be inviting you to executive session.
And Samini, I just sent you the invite. Liz, do you need me to resend it?
Did it come from you originally?
No, I think it came from, uh, no, the executive session definitely came from me.
Okay, all right, I'll go find it.
You know what? I will, I will also send it.
When you, when you leave this meeting, if you click return to home screen, you'll see a little, you'll be on a page and then you can just click the next meeting that's on your calendar automatically. It's really handy.
I just looked in my calendar. I didn't have it. That's why, that's why I was asking.
Look at you, Jess, giving tech advice.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't tell anyone, Pavija.
I heard it.
There we go.
Yes, it's being recorded.
Yeah, exactly. All right, I just sent that. Everybody should have, should get the, yeah, the list.
So I, I motioned to adjourn to executive session in five minutes for a bye-bye.
I'm going to make it, well, we're going to start in, try to be there in five minutes. We're going to start in 10 minutes.
Fine.
So I have a motion to, well, make it, well, to start to adjourn for exec, to executive session from Raul. I need a second.
I seconded it.
Second from Liz. And the, and the reason we're going into executive session because it would be detrimental to our position to discuss these in open session. And we'll be inviting Ellen and Leanna and Samini to join us in executive session and Mike?
And Lisa.
And Mike and Lisa O'Connor. And that should, one, two, three, yeah. So that's the executive session vote. I need, oh, I got my cheat sheet here. Uh, Raul?
Yes.
Uh, Jill?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Roger, yes. A motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned. And we will start executive session at 9:30.